Pedro, por favor, inicie el grabado.
Está grabando bien.
Buenas tardes y bienvenidos a la audiencia de la Cámara de Cuidados del Consejo de Nueva York del Comité de Justicia Criminales, junto con el Comité de Hospitalos. En este momento, que todos los miembros y personal del Consejo de Cuidados, por favor, enciendan su video. Para minimizar la interrupción, por favor, coloquen dispositivos electrónicos en modo vibrante o silencio. Si desea enviar testimonio, puede hacerlo en testimonies@council.myc.gov. Una vez más, eso es testimonies@council.myc.gov. Gracias por su cooperación. Estamos listos para empezar.
Buenas tardes, a todos. Creo que estamos todos listos, ¿verdad?, en el back-end y estamos transmitiendo en vivo.
Sí.
Excelente, está bien. Gracias por unirse a nuestra audiencia virtual hoy para los comités sobre los hospitales y justicia criminal. Hoy, los comités examinarán al Departamento de Corrección y Servicios de Salud de la Gestión de COVID-19. Me gustaría reconocer que hemos estado acompañados por nuestros colegas. Veo, por supuesto, a mi colega presidente, miembro del consejo, Powers, miembros del consejo, Ayala, Holden, Lansman, Mazel, Reynoso y miembro del consejo, Alica Ampri Samuel. Estoy asegurándome de que no perdí a nadie. Genial, está bien. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Carolina Rivera y soy presidenta del Comité de Hospitalos. Quiero comenzar por agradecer a mi colega, miembro del consejo, Keith Powers, por asistir a esta audiencia conmigo hoy. También me gustaría agradecer a todos ustedes que se han unido a nosotros para esta audiencia remota. Estamos aquí hoy para examinar al Departamento de Corrección y Servicios de Salud de la Gestión de COVID-19. Esta pandemia es unlike cualquier cosa que habíamos visto antes y ha causado una dificultad imparable para nuestra ciudad, pero especialmente para nuestro sistema de justicia y aquellos que están encarcelados. A partir de 20 de septiembre, han habido 235,649 casos y 19,149 confirmadas muertes en Nueva York. Y de aquellos que pudieron ser probados, 1,423 personal del Departamento de Corrección, 576 individuos en custodia y 205 personal de la C.H.S. han sido probados positivo por el virus. Hoy espero escuchar sobre cómo la C.H.S. y el D.O.C. han trabajado para mantener a aquellos encarcelados y trabajando en nuestras instalaciones correctionales seguras y, importante, cómo planeamos continuar manteniendo a los individuos seguros en el caso de una segunda onda. Quiero agradecer a la C.H.S. y al D.O.C. sus esfuerzos y también estoy agradecida por todos aquellos que han hablado sobre estos temas durante toda la pandemia. En particular, soy consciente de aquellos que están actualmente trabajando dentro de nuestros sistemas de justicia, que han ido adelante para asegurar que abordemos problemas y mantener a aquellos encarcelados seguros. Debido a los monumentales esfuerzos de los novedores de Nueva York, estamos experimentando una tasa de infección consistentemente baja dentro del estado, una que permanece por menos del 1% durante más de un mes. A medida que las restricciones continúan aislarse, incluyendo la reabertura de la cocina interna y las escuelas, me preocupa, como todos somos, una potencial aumento en los casos. Soy particularmente consciente de aquellos en entornos congregativos, incluyendo a los encarcelados y aquellos trabajando en las instalaciones, como hemos visto los devastadores impactos que el COVID-19 puede tener en situaciones similares, incluyendo instalaciones correctionales en otros estados. También soy consciente de que mientras discutimos estos temas, hay discusiones simultáneas sobre la necesidad de reformar nuestro sistema de justicia. Los impactos secundarios del racismo sistémico han llevado a la encarcelación de algunos de nuestros novedores de Nueva York, incluidos aquellos que vienen de áreas desproporcionadamente afectadas por los impactos de la salud y económicas del COVID-19. Quiero centrar nuestra audiencia hoy sobre la salud y la justicia racial e equidad y quiero asegurar que estamos haciendo todo lo que podemos para proteger a aquellos encarcelados así como aquellos que trabajan dentro de estas instalaciones. Mientras que agradezco a la C.H.S. y al D.O.C. por el que mantienen una baja cantidad de infecciones del COVID, quiero estar seguro de que mantenemos tales figuras y estamos asegurando que nuestra información es precisa. El Consejo de Corregiciones, BOC, y otros han expresado preocupación por la inexacta usada de PPE incoherente y la incapacidad de mantener la propera distanciación social y prácticas de saneamiento y talas acciones podrían ser devastadoras si las tasa de infección comienza a subir. Mientras que el D.O.C. y la C.H.S. proporcionan numerosas fuentes de datos sobre la salud de aquellos encarcelados, algunos de los datos deben ser clarificados y entender mejor cómo éramos exitosos en satisfacer las necesidades de aquellos en custodia. La C.H.S. comenzó a hacer datos sobre el número de individuos probados por infección disponibles diariamente el 29 de junio. Mientras apreciamos estos esfuerzos, en promedio, el 73% de los resultados en un día dado están listados como pendientes en lugar de enumerar una o dos resultados positivos o negativos de prueba. Esto implica que los resultados de estos pruebas pendientes no están siendo reportados por la C.H.S. Sin entender cuántas nuevas infecciones fueron confirmadas en cualquier día dado, se vuelve imposible entender la tasa de infección del COVID-19. Monitorear las tasa de infección de manera temprana y eficiente es crucial para mantener el control sobre la propagación del virus. Además, sabemos que las personas entrando en custodia son controladas y probadas por el COVID-19, no estamos seguros de cuántas pruebas accesibles son para aquellos que están encarcelados. Además, aunque la ley 59 local requiere que la C.H.S. reporte el número de correos voicales restantes en todas las llamadas telefónicas de la C.H.S., la C.H.S. afirma que el departamento no es capaz de determinar si una llamada puesta a un número de la C.H.S. resultó en un mensaje de voz y no tiene acceso al sistema de mensajes de voz de la C.H.S. y, por lo tanto, no puede determinar el número de mensajes de voz restantes en tales números de teléfono. Por lo tanto, no es claro para nosotros cuántas personas en custodia están recibiendo acceso temprano a la atención médica. Esto se enfatiza en un informe de la BOC sobre las demandas y solicitudes de información recibidas por la Oficina de Constitución y Servicios de Relevancia desde el 5 de marzo hasta el 30 de abril. Según un informe, el 19% o 1,016 de los más de 5,000 reclamaciones recibidas fueron identificados como relacionadas con el COVID-19. De las reclamaciones, las OCGS aceptadas, aproximadamente 220 se referían a la C.H.S. y el Consejo no tiene acceso a estas resoluciones. Esto es de gran preocupación, considerando que el Consejo encontró que las demandas de salud y mentalidad eran el tipo de reclamaciones más frecuente que las OCGS recibían. Los hallazgos del Consejo muestran que para las reclamaciones del COVID-19 en la categoría de H&amp;H, el 30%, el 110%, se referían a acceso a la atención médica, que se presentaron por personas en custodia, el 23%, el 83%, se referían a personas preocupadas por la exposición al COVID-19 y el 12%, el 45%, se referían a personas preocupadas por la exposición al COVID-19 y el 12% se referían a la falta de medidas preventivas en las instalaciones, incluyendo la falta de pruebas. La alta frecuencia de reclamaciones de salud y mentalidad debe ser examinada aún más y espero escuchar más sobre acceso a la atención médica y acceso a la prueba hoy. Gracias a todos de nuevo por estar aquí hoy y espero una discusión robusta. Ahora voy a pasar la palabra a mi co-chair, miembro del consejo, Powers.
Gracias, miembro Rivera, buenas tardes a todos. Miembro del consejo de cuestión Keith Powers, presidente del Comité de Justicia Criminales y estoy contento de que todos puedan unirse a nosotros remotamente para la audiencia conjunta con el Departamento de Corrección y Servicios de Salud de la Gestión de COVID en las cárceles de la ciudad. Y antes de entrar en los demás comentarios, solo quiero decirle gracias a todos los que han estado trabajando en las líneas frontales y ayudando a luchar contra la pandemia. Sé que nos sentimos como si estuvieramos en un lugar diferente hoy, pero para muchos de los que pasaron los últimos meses, sé que esto fue una tarea muy difícil y quiero decirles gracias a todos y a los médicos, las enfermeras, el personal del D.O.C. por sus esfuerzos y su valentía por hacer este trabajo en un momento en el que no era fácil. Y estoy contento de estar aquí hoy para hacer otra audiencia relacionada con el COVID en nuestras cárceles de la ciudad. Estamos ahora seis meses en la pandemia del COVID-19 y aunque sentimos que el peor es detrás de nosotros mientras Nueva York ciudad se reabre gradualmente, creo que todos sabemos que la amenaza de la infección del COVID-19 en las cárceles sigue. Oficiales de salud pública predican una segunda onda de infección del COVID-19 en los meses anteriores y las personas en custodia son entre las más vulnerables debido a que los entornos de cárceles permiten la propagación del virus rápidamente. Los números se dicen por sí mismos. A la altura de esta pandemia, casi 400 personas encarceladas fueron probadas positiva por el COVID-19 y al menos tres murieron de la infección. El número de casos positivos ha disminuido a menos de 300 a partir de 4 de septiembre, en gran parte gracias al trabajo duro del D.O.C. y de la C.H.S. y el trabajo que han hecho para mantener a las personas en custodia seguras, pero con la posibilidad de una segunda onda brillando y un aumento en la población de la cárcel, en particular entre las personas vulnerables en custodia, tenemos que permanecer vigilantes en nuestra supervisión y en nuestros esfuerzos. Hoy vamos a ver la esfuerzo de la C.H.S. y el D.O.C. para identificar, separar, monitorear y tratar a las personas enfermas y vulnerables en custodia y a aquellos expuestos al COVID-19. Los esfuerzos del D.O.C. y de la C.H.S. para instaurar pruebas en personas entrando en custodia han sido esenciales para luchar contra la propagación del COVID-19, pero todavía hay preguntas sobre los retrasos en obtener los resultados de pruebas, la alojamiento de personas que se niegan a pruebas en la entrada y qué tipo de información de salud se proporciona a las personas en custodia. También hay huecos en los datos del D.O.C. que nos gustaría llenar en términos de pruebas y reclamaciones y, como saben, pasamos la legislación en mayo, creo que fue, para requerir una mejor reporte y datos y apreciamos los esfuerzos en el nivel diario para darnos un update sobre ello, pero creo que todavía nos gustaría ver mucho más datos proporcionados a nosotros y poder llenar los huecos. Pruebas para el personal y asegurar que los protocolos de seguridad sigan siendo seguidos y el personal sigue siendo seguido es crucial para prevenir la transmisión del virus de la comunidad a nuestras cárceles, sin embargo, no hemos visto un compromiso con la prueba mandada para el personal. Hemos visto eso en Michigan donde el Departamento de Corrección de Estados requiere que el personal sea probado por el COVID-19 y creemos que es una buena política. Es algo que el miembro del consejo Holden y otros han estado empujando por temprano en la pandemia para asegurar que había disponible pruebas para el personal y quiero agradecerle a él y a otros por ese esfuerzo. También recibimos muchos informes de personal del D.O.C. no usando máscaras adecuadas mientras patrullan las instalaciones, que también he observado mientras trabajaba en los puntos de seguridad de seguridad o al albergar visitantes a Rikers Island. El Consejo de Corregencias también documentó la inconsistencia de la saneación y el uso de máscaras entre el personal del D.O.C., lo que sentimos que necesita ser abordado. Y quiero decir que esto no es para elegir en el personal o elegir en una agencia, pero es parte de prevenir la propagación del virus y queremos asegurar que todas las agencias y en particular las que trabajan con personas en custodia están adhiriendo a esos protocolos de seguridad. No es una cosa de "ya" es una forma de asegurarnos de que estamos haciendo todo lo que podemos para prevenir la propagación del virus. Hoy quiero escuchar de la C.H.S. y de la C.H.S. sobre sus planes para prevenir una segunda onda, incluyendo medidas de seguridad puestas en place para cualquier reabertura futura de servicio religioso, programación en persona, visita familiar y visitas de abogado en persona. La falta de información clara hasta ahora sobre un plan de reabertura en las cárceles me preocupa y creo que nos preocupa a todos. También necesitábamos más información de la C.H.S. sobre su programa de rastreo de contacto en términos de cómo funciona el programa y su alcance, pero, en última instancia, es el deber y responsabilidad de la ciudad mantener a las personas en custodia seguras, especialmente personas que son particularmente vulnerables al COVID-19 y eso también se refiere a mantener a todos nuestros personal seguros también. Quiero agradecer a todos los personal aquí por organizar esta audiencia. Quiero agradecer a todos los miembros del consejo en la audiencia y al presidente Rivera por su esfuerzo y diligencia, asegurándose de que estamos preparados para una segunda onda y ser capaces de hacer el trabajo que necesitamos hacer para mantener a las personas seguras y ahora pasaré la palabra a el presidente Rivera.
Muchas gracias, presidente Powers, por tu liderazgo en este tema. Voy a pasar la palabra a nuestro moderador, el consejo de cuestión Harbani Ahuja, para pasar por algunos elementos procederales.
Gracias, presidente. Mi nombre es Harbani Ahuja y soy consejera del Comité de Hospitalos en la Cámara de Cuidados de Nueva York. Antes de comenzar, quiero recordar a todos que estarán en mute hasta que se les llame para testificar cuando serán inmutados por el host. Yo voy a llamar a los panelistas para testificar. Por favor, escuchen para que su nombre sea llamado. Yo voy a anunciar periódicamente quién será el próximo panelista. El primer panelista para dar testimonio será representante de los Servicios de Salud Correctional y el Departamento de Corrección. El testimonio de la C.H.S. será proporcionado por el vicepresidente senior Paty Yang y el testimonio del D.O.C. será proporcionado por el comisionero Cynthia Brand. Además, los siguientes representantes estarán disponibles para responder preguntas. Desde la C.H.S., el jefe médico Ross McDonald y el jefe operativo Carlos Castellanos. Desde el D.O.C., el jefe de personal Brenda Cook, jefe del departamento Hazel Jennings, comisionero de la Patricio Feeny, comisionero general de la Cámara de Cuidados Heidi Grossman, comisionero de programas Judy Beal, comisionero senior Timothy Farrell, comisionero de la división de la informática Maureen Danko, senador correctional institucional Richard Bush, comisionero de la financiación Patricia Lyons, acting comisionero y jefe de la oficina de diversidad Lenelle McGinnley-Liddy y acting comisionero de la división de programas Francis Torres. Yo llamaré a usted cuando sea su turno de hablar durante la audiencia. Si los miembros del consejo quieren hacer una pregunta de la administración o de un panelista específico, por favor, use la función Zoom, levante la mano y yo llamaré a usted en orden. Nosotros llamaremos a los representantes de la agencia y a los paneles y preguntaremos si los miembros del consejo reservan sus preguntas después de que cada panel termine testificando. Todos los participantes de la audiencia deben enviar un testimonio escrito a testimonies@council.nyc.gov. Ahora llamaremos a los representantes de la administración para testificar. Antes de comenzar, yo administraré la ola. Paty Yang, Ross McDonald, Carlos Castellanos, comisionero Brand, Brenda Cook, Hazel Jennings, Patricia Feeny, Heidi Grossman, Judy Beal, Timothy Farrell, Maureen Danko, Richard Bush, Patricia Lyons, Lenelle McGinnley-Liddy, Francis Torres. Yo llamaré a cada uno de ustedes individualmente por respuesta. Por favor, levanten sus manos. ¿Afirmas que dice la verdad, la verdad completa y nada más que la verdad en tu testimonio ante este comité y respondes honestamente a las preguntas del miembro del consejo? Paty Yang.
Lo hago.
Gracias. Ross McDonald.
Creo que hay que repetirlo.
Lo hago.
Gracias. Carlos Castellanos.
Lo hago.
Gracias, comisionero Brand.
Lo hago.
Gracias, Brenda Cook.
Lo hago.
Gracias, Hazel Jennings.
Buenas tardes, lo hago.
Gracias, Patricia Feeny.
Lo hago.
Gracias, Heidi Grossman.
Lo hago.
Gracias, Judy Beal.
Lo hago.
Gracias, Timothy Farrell.
Lo hago.
Gracias, Maureen Danko.
Ella no está participando en esta reunión.
Está bien, gracias. Richard Bush.
Lo hago.
Gracias, Patricia Lyons.
Lo hago.
Gracias, Lenelle McGinnley-Liddy.
Lo hago.
Gracias, y Francis Torres.
Lo hago.
Gracias, vicepresidente senior Paty Yang, usted puede comenzar su testimonio cuando esté listo.
Genial, bien, buenas tardes, presidente Powers y Rivera y miembros del Comité de Justicia y del Consejo de Hospitalos. Soy Paty Yang, vicepresidente senior en la salud y hospitalos de Nueva York para los Servicios de Salud Correctional, también referido como la C.H.S. Estoy unido a esta sala a gran distancia física y en off camera actualmente para que pueda realmente hablar con usted sin mi máscara por un tiempo. Es Ross McDonald, nuestro jefe médico, Carlos Castellanos, nuestro jefe operativo, así como Jeanette Merrill, nuestra directora de comunicaciones e intergubernamentales y Benjamin Farber, nuestro jefe de personal. Agradecemos la oportunidad de actualizar ustedes desde que la última vez testificé en mayo sobre nuestros considerables esfuerzos para manejar el COVID-19 en las cárceles de la ciudad. Primero, me gustaría reconocer que nuestro último caso confirmado de transmisión en cárceles del COVID-19 fue el 19 de mayo. Aunque teníamos 15 casos positivos desde entonces, todos eran individuos recién admitidos del community y pudimos prevenir la propagación de la enfermedad a otros pacientes. Afortunadamente, no hemos tenido muertes de pacientes relacionadas con el COVID desde abril. Mientras otras instalaciones correctionales en todo el país continúan con el rápido spread de COVID-19, nosotros en Nueva York hemos efectivamente reducido la curva. Nuestra capacidad de manejar un virus tan contagioso en una situación únicamente desafiante se refiere a la eficacia de nuestra estrategia de respuesta al COVID-19. Cuando la última vez testificé en mayo, señalé los tres espinas de nuestro enfoque para reducir la transmisión en las cárceles: descarcería, contención y mantenimiento. Continuamos a adherirnos a estos principios de este enfoque mientras modificamos nuestras prácticas para cumplir las necesidades actuales de nuestra población de pacientes y para estar alineados con la evolutiva guía de la salud pública. Mientras nuestro sistema de cárceles y Nueva York más ampliamente han logrado un maravilloso progreso en combatir el COVID-19, sabemos que el virus SARS-CoV-2 todavía está aquí y la magnitud de cualquier resurgencia dependerá en gran parte de vigilancia y rápida respuesta. En paralelismo con el Departamento de Corrección, los operadores y profesionales administrativos clínicos en la C.H.S. han continuado a planear y preparar la reemergencia del virus en las cárceles utilizando nuestro primer responde al COVID-19 como un esquema de seguimiento para mantener a los pacientes y personal sanos y seguros. Para volver a nuestro enfoque de tres prongas, nuestros esfuerzos de descarcería se centraron en identificar a los pacientes que estarían más vulnerables a una severa corriente de COVID-19 si contractan el virus. Nuestros esfuerzos de liberación compasiva, que precedieron pero se expandieron a consecuencia del COVID-19, siguieron durante el verano. Continuamos trabajando con la defensa, la procesión, los tribunales y nuestros socios de la ciudad y el estado para ayudar a la liberación de los pacientes. Sabemos que el virus se transmite más efectivamente entre personas en contacto cercano y prolongado mientras en espacios densamente poblados encerrados practicamos la distanciación física y la buena higiene puede ser difícil. Esto a veces se define como un entorno de cárceles. Reducir el número de individuos en las cárceles a través de esfuerzos de descarcería destinados, por lo tanto, es vital para limitar la transmisión en las cárceles y para proteger la salud de los individuos que continúan viviendo y trabajando en las cárceles. También ayudamos a proteger la salud de las personas en la comunidad al controlar a cada paciente que el D.O.C. traiga antes de descartar de las cárceles para que podamos educar a las personas que necesitan se isolate y asistir a aquellos que necesitan comodidades en las que hacerlo. Podría notar que desde marzo hasta septiembre, el 6 de septiembre, hemos tenido 1,559 peticiones de apoyo para la liberación compasiva de los pacientes y ofrecemos eso para la advocacy de la procesión y la defensa. Volviendo a mi testimonio, para efectuar el segundo componente de nuestro enfoque, que era la contención, implementamos una estrategia robusta de pruebas y un plan de alojamiento integrado. Durante la altura de la pandemia, estuvimos probando a un ritmo superior a ese en la mayor comunidad. En septiembre 16 de 2020, hemos probado más de 5,000 pacientes con COVID-19. Cumulativamente, 570 pacientes han sido probados positivos por el virus. Es importante recordar, sin embargo, que no todos estos pacientes permanecen en el sistema y ninguno de nuestros pacientes actuales son activamente infectados. No tenemos casos activos en las cárceles. Durante la última onda de la pandemia, ofrecimos pruebas a pacientes sintomáticos y pacientes que eran asintomáticos pero altamente vulnerables. En septiembre 16, aproximadamente el 51% de los individuos actualmente en custodia han sido probados por el COVID-19 y nuestra tasa de incidencia está en 0% comparada con una tasa de aproximadamente 1% en Nueva York. Como pueden saber, la C.H.S. no ha sido inmune a los retrasos que la ciudad y, en realidad, el país ha experimentado en turnos de prueba. Mientras que la prueba es solo un componente de nuestra estrategia de respuesta al COVID, los datos ayudan a tomar decisiones sobre alojamientos y atención médica y es crucial que recibamos resultados tempranos. En 8:00 AM esta mañana, el 21 de septiembre, la C.H.S. ha mudado al laboratorio de respuesta de la pandemia de la ciudad, un laboratorio que ayudará a la ciudad a procesar los resultados de pruebas en 24 a 48 horas. Estamos seguros de que esta nueva infraestructura de pruebas tendrá una mejora significativa en los turnos de prueba en nuestro sistema y ayudará a procesar las operaciones en general. Sin la transmisión actual dentro de las cárceles, estamos ahora centrados en probar universalmente a todos los individuos entrando en el sistema, independientemente de los síntomas. Todos los pacientes recién admitidos están en cuarentena también hasta que prueben negativo y o muestren sin síntomas durante el curso de 14 días. Como nuestra estrategia de pruebas, nuestro modelo de alojamiento permanece débil lo suficiente para responder a la naturaleza dinámica de este virus. Al principio de la pandemia, trabajamos con el D.O.C. para adaptar y expandir nuestro concepto de alojamiento terapéutico. Básicamente creamos una nueva designación de alojamiento terapéutico para los pacientes en el espectro del COVID basado en la necesidad clínica y el estado de cada paciente. Nuestro plan de alojamiento, que incluía el uso de la habitación de 98 habitaciones de un unidad de salud de enfermedades, separadamente alojaba a individuos que eran altamente vulnerables a una severa corriente de enfermedad si contractaban el virus. Estos estaban separados de pacientes asintomáticos conocidos como habían sido expuestos, separados de pacientes que exhibían síntomas como COVID y confirmaron casos de COVID. Dado el estado actual de la enfermedad en las cárceles, la mayoría de estas designaciones especiales han sido suspendidas, pero están listas para ser activadas cuando y si la necesidad surge, como lo hicimos durante la altura de la crisis. Desde que el SARS-CoV-2 se identificó en las cárceles, hemos continuado a modificar nuestra estrategia de contención de dos prongas de pruebas y alojamiento para mejor cumplir las necesidades de nuestros pacientes y nuestra comprensión evolutiva de esta enfermedad. Además, continuamos a monitorear a los pacientes y personal para señales de enfermedad, incluyendo la controlación específica de pacientes en cada punto de contacto dentro del proceso de justicia criminal, pre-arrumbramiento, admisión, encuentros clínicos y descarga. A través del tercer componente de nuestro enfoque, que era el mantenimiento, hemos continuado a proporcionar acceso a las servicios de atención médica mientras adherimos a los protocolos de distanciación físico en nuestras clínicas y en nuestros espacios de espera. Ha mantenido acceso a la atención médica, enfermería, servicios de salud mental, así como el tratamiento de uso de sustancias en continua expansión. Mantener la salud de nuestros pacientes es crucial para ayudar a nuestros pacientes a más o menos defenderse de la enfermedad y luchar contra sus peores efectos si contractan el virus. También hemos mantenido acceso a nuestros servicios de descarga y, en algunos aspectos, hemos ampliado la provisión de estos servicios durante el curso de la pandemia. Como mencionado anteriormente, la C.H.S. controla a los pacientes que el D.O.C. presenta antes de descartar de las cárceles por síntomas de COVID-19 y ofrecemos información sobre COVID y sitios de pruebas de comunidad. Si alguien informa síntomas o confirma positivo por COVID en el momento de descarga y no tiene un lugar para se isolate segura, se ofrecen opciones de isolación. La C.H.S. también está trabajando con el D.O.H.M.H. y con el New York Hospital Test y Tracé, conocido como T2, para que pacientes positivos o sintomáticos que están descartados a la comunidad puedan ser monitoreados y proporcionados el necesaria ayuda específica de COVID y cuidado. Como parte de sus servicios de descarga complejos, la C.H.S. también proporciona información general a los pacientes sobre sus servicios de comunidad que pueden ayudar a apoyar la entrada exitosa. Estos incluyen nuestro programa de reentrada y transición, PORT, que incluye asistencia telefónica en la navegación en persona y el cuidado de los pacientes por proveedores de la C.H.S. en instalaciones de salud de la comunidad. También se refiere al red de asistencia de la comunidad, o CRAN, que ofrece asistencias telefónicas y personales de ayuda y asistencia para el servicio de salud y servicios humanos. También animamos a todos los pacientes a llamar al teléfono de PORT después de su liberación para hablar con un amigo sobre acceder a servicios de comunidad. Finalmente, me gustaría notar que hemos trabajado para hacer que nuestros datos de COVID-19 sean más públicamente disponibles. Ahora proporcionamos métricas de COVID-19, incluyendo las incidencias y las proporciones de prevalencia en el sitio web de la C.H.S., en addition a los datos que reportamos a la ley 59 local. Agradezco que la divulgación de la información precisa y temprana es paramounte durante la crisis de salud pública. Seguimos comprometidos con la transparencia y la accesibilidad. Diario, leo informes criticando la gestión del COVID-19 en las cárceles y cárceles de todo el país. Aquí en Nueva York, es el epicentro del epicentro. Soy orgulloso y humilde de lo que el D.O.C. y la C.H.S. han logrado juntos a través de esta pandemia. tomamos decisiones juntas basadas en una poolación sin precedentes de la riqueza de nuestra experiencia clínica y de seguridad y experiencia. La ciencia evolutiva sobre este virus que se está cambiando también ha informado nuestro enfoque y siempre ha informado nuestro enfoque. Fueron impulsados por profesionales de la línea central que hicieron sacrificios personales y exhibieron profesionalismo sin duda. Soy honrado de trabajar con tales individuos dedicados durante uno de los momentos más difíciles de la historia de la ciudad y sé que estamos listos para enfrentar los desafíos que se enfrentan. Gracias.
Gracias por su testimonio. Comisionero Brand, usted puede comenzar su testimonio cuando esté listo.
Buenos días, presidente Powers, presidente Rivera y miembros del Comité de Justicia y del Comité de Hospitalos. Estoy contento de ver que están todos sanos y bien. Estoy feliz de estar unido hoy por los miembros dedicados de mi equipo de liderazgo y nuestros valorados socios de todas las agencias de justicia criminal de nuestra ciudad. Desde la última vez que testificamos ante sus comités, el departamento ha continuado a trabajar alrededor del horario para mantener a aquellos vivos y trabajando en nuestras instalaciones seguras. En los últimos tres meses, como instituciones correctionales en todo el país han registrado números récord de casos de COVID, el departamento no ha tenido nuevas transmisiones de cárceles entre los en custodia y solo aproximadamente 12 nuevos casos de personal. Nuestro éxito se ve evidente por la salud de nuestro personal y nuestra población y hemos sido orgullosos de compartir nuestras estrategias de mitigación del COVID-19 con instituciones correctionales en todo el país. Gracias por la oportunidad de discutir cómo los esfuerzos del departamento de manejar el COVID-19 dentro de nuestras instalaciones y nuestros planes para continuar logrando este éxito en el caso de una segunda onda. Sin embargo, me gustaría reconocer a los dedicanos y trabajadores duraderos del Departamento de Corrección y Servicios de Salud Correctional por sus increíbles esfuerzos durante esta pandemia. Desde el primer día, han permanecido comprometidos en proteger la seguridad y el bienestar de aquellos confiados en su cuidado y han hecho un gran sacrificio personal. Como comisionera, soy orgulloso de sus esfuerzos heroicos y sigo honrado de trabajar As Commissioner, I am proud of their heroic efforts and remain honored to work beside them. COVID-19 continues to be an unprecedented crisis, the likes of which this city has never seen. Since the first days of the pandemic and every day thereafter, the department has taken swift and decisive action to keep everyone living and working in our facilities safe. Following an initial spike in cases in March and April, the total number of active cases among people in custody quickly declined. While other correctional jurisdictions are continuing to see the infection spread rapidly across their facilities, with positivity rates among those in custody spiking as high as 17% and 18% in prisons across Florida and Texas, the department has seen no new jail transmissions in over three months. We have achieved this success through strict adherence to several mitigation measures, which I will recap for you briefly. First, the department has implemented policies focusing on preventing the virus from coming into our facilities in the first place. This includes screening all staff upon entry to the facilities and testing all new admissions for the virus upon intake. Asymptomatic individuals newly admitted to custody are co-horted separately from the general population until they receive a negative COVID test or satisfy a quarantine period. Any new admissions testing positive are quarantined for a period of at least 14 days or until symptoms subside. All staff with a temperature above 100.4 or experiencing any symptoms are not allowed to be at work and are directed to stay home and contact our Health Management Division. Second, the department took critical steps to contain the spread of the virus. We leveraged and expanded our existing robust sanitation practices, activated protocols to provide personal protective equipment to both staff and individuals in custody, and established a tiered housing structure that separates individuals who are symptomatic, positive, or exposed to COVID-19 from the general population. Individuals in custody continue to be made aware of vital public health guidance surrounding mask use and social distancing via posters, informational flyers, and conversations with DOC and CHS staff. Third, with its citywide partners, the department thoughtfully examined its population with the goal of identifying who was most vulnerable to the disease and would be better served in the community. As a result, the department released over 2,000 individuals over the past six months with the effect of reducing housing capacity and increasing the feasibility for effective social distancing. While these procedures I have described were put in place in mere days, the department has internally reexamined and reevaluating them, addressing any challenges or gaps. We will continue to build upon these measures and make changes as necessary to ensure everyone living or working in the jails remain safe. Thankfully, the curve remains flat in New York City and in the jails, and we are preparing to begin reopening certain services that have been paused to prevent COVID spread. The department has worked closely with DOHMH, CHS, and the Law Department to develop a safe plan to reinstate these services in a manner that protects the spread of COVID-19. In order to do so, we plan to reopen services in a deliberate and staggered manner, beginning with those required by the board's minimum standards. The first service the department will reinstate are barber shop services. Taking into consideration the guidelines governing these services in the community, the department will resume these services in a manner that affords effective social distancing, includes necessary personal protective equipment for all parties involved, and involves robust sanitation processes and practices between each haircut. To reduce movement around its facilities, the department will provide socially-distanced barber services in each housing unit rather than have all individuals be transported to a centralized location. Barbers will perform one haircut at a time, utilizing appropriate sanitation practices between each cut. Next, the department will resume congregate religious services for all denominations. Consistent with New York State's reopening guidelines, services will initially be kept at 10 individuals. To accommodate this reduced capacity, more services will be hosted daily in all facilities. All participants will be required to wear masks and will be asked to bring their own religious texts to reduce sharing. Appropriate sanitation will be performed in between services. Finally, the department will look to reinstate in-person family visits. As we prepare, the department is considering precautions like pre-registration, reduction of visit floor capacity to ensure social distancing and screening. Televisits will continue to be available as in-person visitation resumes. As these plans develop and services are reinstated, we will continue to communicate closely with our partners in health and labor to assure that we are returning these services in a manner that takes into account the health, safety, security, and well-being of those who are in our custody and who work in our facilities. While the department is optimistic about its reopening plans and the continuation of its successful mitigation efforts, we are prepared to address the second wave if it arrives. This preparation includes continuing our close collaboration and relationship with CHS to monitor COVID-19 cases in the facilities, securing enough supplies to be ready for a resurgence, and reinforcing the COVID-19-specific policies and practices through additional training, posters, and teletypes. Additionally, the department has no plans to halt or interrupt the practices that have been successful for mitigation, such as enhanced sanitation, new admission workflow, and tiered housing structure. We will continue efforts that have been beneficial to the well-being of individuals in custody, such as televisits, chaplaincy hotlines, social service requests, and attorney video conferences. We recognize that jails, as a closed congregate setting, are especially vulnerable during this time, and we will continue to build upon the lessons we learned this spring to keep everyone safe. Throughout this unprecedented crisis and its many challenges, the department has and will remain committed to protecting all those living and working within our facilities safe. We will continue to collaborate with our partners to develop creative practices and policies to effectively manage this public health emergency, and we will come out stronger and bolder as a result. I thank the council for their continued support during this time and happy to answer questions that you have at this point.
Thank you for your testimony. I will now turn it over to questions from Chair Rivera, followed by Chair Powers. Panelists, please stay unmuted, if possible, during the question-and-answer period. Thank you. Chair Rivera, please begin.
Thank you so much for your testimony and for your time today. We really appreciate the leadership team that you brought with your organizations. Just want to hear about your plan for a second wave. What data metrics are being studied to monitor facilities for the possibility of a second wave? And for whatever plan that you do have, whether you'd be willing to share that plan with the council in writing and with the public?
Who are you directing that question to? Me or Pati Yang?
It should be for both of you. I figure you're working collaboratively in case of a second wave because of the impacts on both CHS and DOC staff, but we can start with you.
Yeah, it's Pati Yang. Thanks, Commissioner. As noted, we are focusing our efforts on people who are newly admitted to the system from the community. The testing that we're doing, the quarantining that we're doing, is meant to minimize or prevent as much as possible the introduction of the virus back into the jails and certainly the spread of it within the jails. We monitor this daily. We're looking at our testing, the testing results, and stay in touch with DOC in case we start seeing things going the other way.
Would you be willing to share your preparation, your plan, and what you would do in case of a second wave with the public and with the council? Specifically, if you plan to open like another facility, like EMTC, just in case? Details like that?
Before I hand it over to the Commissioner, we still have our communicable disease unit near the West facility that would, that remains available for quarantine, isolation if needed. We can easily stand up with DOC the specialized housing. We have done that in the past where we needed to, when we needed to isolate any new admission who had tested positive and everybody else who was with them. We did not take down or dismantle EMTC, for example. Both CHS and certainly DOC have, we took some high-value stuff like medications away, but that's easily brought back in. The infrastructure is still there.
Commissioner, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I would just say that we have not dismantled any of our practices, our enhanced sanitation, our housing strategies. We test staff every single day, and anyone who is not well is sent home. We continue that. We testified at the Board of Correction last week and to provide public information, not only at the Board of Correction meetings, but also we are posting all of that information on our website. And if I could just point to an external, objective opinion, there is a letter that was submitted to the federal court, to the judge, which the monitor states that DOC was managing the pandemic very well. And in fact, the department's efforts to address these challenges under extraordinary and incredibly stressful conditions must be acknowledged. So I would say that what we have put in place and continues to this day is how we would deal with a potential second wave. We are constantly looking for red flags and would respond appropriately.
Thank you. Local Law 59 requires CHS to report the number of individuals tested for infection, but many of the results are listed as pending. Why is that? Do you have the ultimate result of those tests?
Yes. As mentioned earlier, or in my testimony, we recognize that we, like the rest of the city, like the rest of this country, have experienced variable turnaround times on test results. That's partly a function of how many people are, how many tests are being done nationwide. Again, as of this morning at 8:00 AM, we moved over from our commercial vendor to the new city lab, which was constructed and built specifically for New York City. We expect that we will get turnaround times that are much more timely, and then we can, you know, we, like everybody else, don't want tests pending. We want to know what those results are.
And if there are variable times, that should be built into the reporting. We're just looking for some data and some answers so that way we are just better informed to support you and the needs of your agencies. You mentioned the communicable disease unit, and if CDU is at capacity, well, what's the current capacity of CDU? How many beds?
It's a 98-bed unit.
What's the current census of CDU?
Thirty, thirty, thirty-eight or thirty-six this morning.
Sorry, did you say 38?
Thirty-six this morning.
Okay, thank you. If CDU is at capacity in the future due to a rise in case or refusals requiring quarantine, where will you house people who are quarantined after refusing a COVID test at intake?
This is Pranik Hook, the Chief of Staff at the Department of Correction. As the Commissioner testified and as Pati Yang also testified, we had activated and reopened the EMTC jail when we saw a surge and a need for additional capacity back in March. We no longer needed that space as of late June, so we are not using that jail, but we have the capacity, and as was discussed, to reopen that facility if we need the additional space on a moment's notice.
I want to ask about just testing and tracing. You gave us some numbers on who has tested positive, who hasn't. You're very, very low, actually zero was the number that you gave. I think it was no deaths since April, 12 new staff cases, only with the Department of Corrections, and your last confirmed case, you said, was May 19. But can you let us talk a little bit about how you're going about daily testing exactly? For those that are refusing testing, for those that have to quarantine, where are they housed? And on average, what is capacity like in that regard in terms of screening every patient? And then I want to talk a little bit about the people that you have recommended for release, but if you could just talk a little bit about testing and then how you're working with H&amp;H, well, with DOC and CHS for your plan for contact tracing?
Sure. So our testing strategy, as Pati mentioned, is asymptomatic universal testing for all new admissions. We continue to have an extremely low threshold for symptomatic testing as well, and we use various types of population surveillance to look at indicators of symptoms that might be associated with COVID-19. So one of the most important tools is a listing of all fevers that come out of the system. So any fever is examined very carefully, and unless there's a very clear explanation for that fever, that person will be isolated and tested. So there's a great deal of testing that's going on for symptoms, and if patients have any concerns, then they will be offered those tests. Those tests, as we've discussed, have been negative for quite some time. So all of the tests that we're performing on a symptomatic basis in, for many months now, are completely negative, which is another important and good sign. And this helps us say with confidence that there is not transmission ongoing within the jails. As far as contact tracing, you know, Correctional Health Services has a long history of contact tracing, and it's part of the expertise of our clinical staff. We have performed contact tracing beyond what a normal healthcare delivery system would do for many years because it's really part of correctional health. So we do contact tracing for tuberculosis, for example, or for varicella, and we would incorporate the principles from those types of, our broad experience for contact tracing those types of illnesses, along with the understanding and the latest guidance from the public health community about COVID specifically. So essentially, we would have a similar process to what happens in the community, except that we take a little bit of a broader scope and have some precautions that are broader than what you might see because of the congregate setting.
So what are the best practices around contact tracing if a person is suspected of having COVID? You recommend notification, testing for all the staff that work with that person, the people in custody housed in that area, people who have, people in custody who have worked on work details, who have been in contact with the person's housing unit?
So it depends on all of the factors, on the nature of the exposure, the duration of the exposure, the proximity of individuals to that person during the contagious phase. So we would take all those things into consideration in performing contact tracing. In addition, we make a broad assumption that anyone housed with the person could be a potential exposure, which again is, you know, broader than the recommendations because many people who are housed with the person wouldn't have met the strict criteria for exposure because they may not have been in close proximity to that person even if they lived in the same house. So it's a combination of the same types of strategies that one would use in the community along with a broader definition of potential exposures.
And so for those who have refused testing, you mandate that they quarantine, they're in isolation. Can you just give a few more details on that? Because we are, we just received some concerns from some of the advocates on what happens when someone refuses to test. What are those actual numbers? I don't think we've heard them yet. And just making sure that social distancing is something that is commonly practiced with these housing units.
Sure. So refusal of testing is, would result in isolation housing, and that goes for contact investigations or for new admission testing. So that, you know, that CDU capacity is there for that purpose at this time, and we would expand it as needed if that became necessary. Initially, we had higher rates of refusal with our new admission testing process, but more recently, those have come down such that refusal is really not a major issue.
I want to ask about releases and then turn it over to Chair Powers. Specifically for CHS, how many people have you recommended release letters for medical purposes? Specifically for CHS, how many people have you recommended release letters for medical purposes? You mentioned 1,559 requests for compassionate release that you sent, I believe, to the district attorney. But if you can talk a little bit about that and DOC, how many of individuals have been released based on CHS's recommendation?
Yeah, so it's Patty Yang. The 1559 is a cumulative number from March 13th through September 6th. And we continue our efforts. As I noted, our compassionate release program preceded the appearance of COVID and continues through to this day.
And Commissioner, do you know how many of those individuals have been released based on CHS's recommendation? Are you still releasing people in custody through the six-day release program?
So in collaboration with our partners at CHS, under my authority under the six-day program, 296 people were released. We have 31 left on that program. And we do a risk assessment on every individual who receives a city sentence. And we look at their history and whether or not they can be better served in the community or in custody with us. And so those conversations are held in concert with CHS when appropriate.
The 296 is since March 13th. How many have been released in the last two months?
I don't have that number for you within the last eight weeks, but I will get that for you.
Okay, because I'm just a little concerned that there were 1,559 and the number that we're discussing in this moment is 296. And I can see an amazing potential there for a much larger number based on CHS recommendations. So if you can give me the numbers for the last two months. And then I guess, Commissioner, any plan to release more people in custody if there is a second wave?
So I'm concerned about your large number of over 1,000. The department doesn't have the authority to release anyone who is put here by the court under bail conditions or by a detainer. We only have the authority to release someone who has already been sentenced. So out of the people who have been sentenced, 296 were released to or appropriate to be released. We only have 104 individuals currently in custody who have a city sentence. And we look at each individual and determine whether or not they're appropriate to be released under the six-eight program.
Understood. We know that you're also working with a number of people on different levels of government in order to hopefully do the right thing and continue what we saw was possible, which was releasing individuals that don't necessarily have to be in custody. So I guess that I want to just.
It's Patty. I just wanted to clarify again that the 1559, that number that I'm referencing, are individuals whose clinical conditions were such that CHS identified them as being highly vulnerable to a severe course of disease. And we initiated those attempts to provide prosecution and defense with the information that would help support their release from jail. That's a little, that's different from other programs and other pathways for people to be released, including what the Commissioner just described.
If I could just ask you then a question about aid. If you could specify the extent to which any COVID-19-related federal aid received by H and H has been allocated for or directed to CHS. And if applicable, how are those resources being utilized to facilitate adequate protection for CHS staff and incarcerated individuals?
CHS has not received directly any federal aid related to COVID. However, being part of the nation's largest municipal healthcare system has given us additional muscle to leverage to ensure that we have the appropriate and adequate supplies, including PPE, medication. And, you know, as we just described this morning, going to a laboratory that health and hospitals was key in establishing specifically for the city of New York.
Understood. I'm going to turn it over to Chair Powers. And I know we have at least one or two of our colleagues who have questions as well. And then we could always return and continue the discussion. Thank you so much. Chair Powers?
Thank you. I'm just going to follow up on the last round of questions, just on the releases for a second. And I want to appreciate the data. I just want to clarify, 1559 was the recommended release number based on, based on CHS recommendation. Is that correct? That was CHS's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. And how many, how many people were released based on the various different opportunities to release? Whether it's a six-eight program, DAs, by ex-governor, the mayor? Like, what was the total number of releases?
So, so, good morning. This is Chief Jennings. So between January and August 20th, we released 11,678 persons. 1,940 were warrantless. 2,721 were released for bail. And then we had 2,231 persons released on their own recognizance.
All right, but those, but those are, some of those are standard, not COVID.
Correct.
Related, is that right? Do we have a number of how many would have been related to COVID, like compassionate relief?
So yes, this is Timothy Farrell. During the height of the epidemic beginning in March, we worked with the state docs and there were 1,251 parole violators that those warrants were lifted and those individuals were released. And that's during a period between March and the end of May. In addition to that, there were 411 individuals released due to court ordered writs after the cases were reviewed. And then there were the 296 individuals released under the six-eight program who were city sentenced. So those were directly related to the COVID epidemic during that height between March and May.
Okay, so it's about 1,900 or something like that by my very quick mathematical math. Okay. And we had passed a piece of legislation, I think it was in May, that would allow for the city to establish under state law. State allowed it. We established it, a local commission to be able to evaluate releases, which is particularly helpful, I think, if there is a second wave or a surge. Has anybody been appointed to that commission today?
This is Brenda Cook. Chair Powers, I understand that to be under the authority of the Department of probation. So we don't have information on that.
Okay. Are you aware of any appointments to that? Let me ask it that way.
I'm not aware, no. No one here in this room is aware.
Okay. And, okay, so just thinking about a surge that could happen in the next few months, particularly as the weather lowers and the temperature lowers here. Could you talk about what policies you will put in? Like, what are, what are the policies you'd be doing differently? If there is a surge in the next few months, if we start to see numbers tick up different than what you're doing today inside the jails?
So I don't believe that what we have in place right now is anything that we would change. We may enhance our processes. But as you've seen with the low numbers and our flattened curve, what we have put in place and with the partnership of CHS, we have been successful. We continuously review our practices. We have conversations with correctional agencies around the country to learn of practices that they're using that help mitigate the spread. And we are always open to enhancing our practices to make sure that we are doing the best possible job at keeping everybody healthy and safe.
Okay, but I assume like you'd open, like as Rivera mentioned, like you'd probably open EMTC or you'd probably do something else here to help deal with housing inside the city jails. There's, I mean, there is, there is an enhanced strategy here. So I'm just trying to wonder what is included in that. And I have to imagine utilizing spaces that's not being utilized right now as part of that. So are there other items that you might see as being part of the strategy or perhaps was part of the strategy that you're not utilizing now? That would be part of a surge or second wave strategy?
Well, you're correct. We would reopen EMTC if we saw a surge in cases because that was highly effective with keeping the same staff in that facility, keeping everybody in quarantine units. There was no cross-contamination and it was extremely effective. And so that would be one of our first operational practices that would go into effect.
Okay. And what triggers that? What numbers are you looking at where you see a surge or a change in the amount of cases per day? Like, what is the, I presume if you see one or two cases, you're not rushing to open up EMTC. Maybe you are, maybe you should be. But what is the trigger here when you're looking at, this is both for CHS and DOC? What is the, when is that decision made to start doing enhanced protocols like opening up EMTC? What is the numbers that you're looking at to make that decision?
Sure. So this is Brenda Cook again. So the bed space at CDU is 98. And so obviously, that is something that the capacity and nearing capacity there would obviously be an indication. But even before, you know, that determination, we work in close partnership every single day with respect to housing decisions for those who either require placement in CDU is at the direction of our partners at Correctional Health. And so they are advising us every single day with respect to the bed needs there. They are also advising us every single day with respect to housing designations that were used robustly during the height of our pandemic in our jails, but are now either non-existent or we might have one house in asymptomatic exposed status, which is what Dr. McDonald referred to earlier, which is a very overly broad assumption that, you know, anyone who had contact with a person who tests positive in our custody, the house in which they live gets an asymptomatic exposed designation. And that is, again, directed to the Department of Correction in partnership by CHS. And then when that house is finished with their asymptomatic exposed period is also determined by CHS. And so it's a close partnership back and forth with respect to both housing decisions, the bed, the bed need at CDU, the anticipated additional surge capacity that may be needed. And so it will be, and it will continue to be, an ongoing daily conversation with our partners at CHS who have done a remarkable job and have taken the reins in many respects with respect to housing decisions that is certainly unaccustomed to a correction setting. But with the trust of the Department of Correction and our partnership, we have full faith that we have been successful and will continue to be successful.
I just wanted to emphasize or give you an example, which is we do work on a daily basis constantly with DOC. And as I noted earlier, we have had no in-jail transmissions since May 19th. And we have no active cases in the jails. Where we have found positive results were in new admissions. The fact that we have been able to move quickly, identify people who are newly admitted to the system and keep the virus from spreading within the jails is a testament to what our three, you know, basic strategies have been, which is, which is decarceration and containment, which includes testing and housing and maintenance of healthcare access. As an example of the housing, the nimbleness with which we, and rapidity with which we need to act in concert with DOC, where we have had new admissions in a cohorting quarantine setting, come back positive. That house has been turned into an asymptomatic exposed house where DOC and we make sure that the people who are co-horted there stay co-horted and that movement is limited until either somebody, everybody else who was with that person who turned out to be positive turns out either to be negative or runs through the 14 days of quarantine. That has been a key strategy. And the minute that's been done, the house goes back to being a regular house, not a designated asymptomatic exposed. So it's a constant and continual process.
I appreciate it. Thank you for that. The MDC is still being used as a new mission facility or has that changed?
No, that's correct. MDC and AMKC and Rosie's for females are new admission locations.
How many tests are you doing per day at this point?
Running, you know, with the admissions, I think the admissions DOC, it's about 40 or 50. And we're offering it universally to everybody who comes in new.
So any new admission is getting tested? Is there's obviously some refusals? If you're in, if you're inside, you're not a new admission, you're not getting tested ever?
No, that's not true. So we're still testing with a very low threshold for any kind of symptoms that might be consistent with COVID-19 and doing surveillance, as I mentioned, for things like fevers.
Okay, okay. And what is, how is staff being? When staff, how is, what is, testing is available for staff? What happens when they walk in the door? Are they getting tested? I know when I was there, I think they did a symptoms check. Is that, is that happening? Can you tell us what the protocols for staff and also the accessibility, availability for testing for them?
So we have screened close to 750,000 individual testing, excuse me, screenings since March 25th. So we test, or we screen by taking temperatures. Everyone has to fill out a questionnaire, myself included. And we do that about 4,368 times per day. Out of all of those testing, there's only 274 staff since March 25th were not cleared to enter a facility. All of our staff know that if they're feeling ill, they have a fever, they have any signs or symptoms of COVID, they're to stay home, not come to work. Call HMD for directions. And free testing is available to all of our staff and they are not allowed to return to work until they have an all-clear from their physician.
And who tests them? They go to CHS to test or they do it off-site?
No, they do it off-site.
It does like a Northwell partnership? Is that still happening?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so they have, they have sites throughout the city and I think the region where they go to get staff, to get tested, as I understand it. Okay, and, but when I, when a staff member, an officer or a staff member walks in the door, they're getting symptoms checked and they're getting their temperature taken?
Correct.
Okay. That when I was there, I just want to be clear. I did see the symptoms being checked. I didn't, I didn't see, I'm not saying I didn't see somebody walking and not get a temperature taken. I didn't see a place where the temperature might be taken. So how?
We have infrared cameras. You probably don't see it as you walk through it. But if you register a temperature of over 100.4, you're stopped right there.
Okay, and it's mandated for a staff member?
Correct.
Okay. We talked about visit, just want to talk about visitation policies. When do in-person, when do you envision that in-person visitations will resume? And what will be the guidelines to help determine that?
So at this time, in-person visitation will resume when we have the direction about the guidelines to do so. We've been working in close partnership with DOHMH and CHS and our labor organizations and the city's administration to make those determinations. In particular, the thresholds with respect to the infection are the last remaining items to be finalized, whether or not that is both the infection rate within our jails, which has been mentioned here today, is right now stands at a 0%, but also a community infection threshold, a dual threshold, much like what we are seeing as been the threshold for reopening schools. And so we are working to identify the capacity, obviously, of our visit floors. Those will be reduced in order to maintain health and safety. We are, I have identified an approach to visit pre-registration as a available possibility, which has not been used previously for in-person visits. But we have been using that to schedule the video visits throughout the pandemic. So there'll be an opportunity to both anticipate and manage the flow of incoming visitors. There'll obviously also be visit screening, the health screening, as you were just describing that applies for staff. We had commenced that in the, at the beginning of the pandemic before in-person visits had stopped. We had been doing that same health screening with temperature taking and inquiries of symptoms. And so we will resume that with respect to visitors for in-person visits. Obviously, also then sanitation of the space between the visits from, you know, one visit group to another will be critical. And so those enhanced sanitation protocols are being identified and finalized. Also, partnership with our labor, the staff who are working in those areas to make sure that we have communicated both with respect. to make sure that we have communicated both with respect to the physical conditions in those spaces plus the enhanced sanitation and the health screening, so that we make sure that we are all moving forward with assured confidence with respect to the procedures and the metrics and the safety that we will ensure in order to reopen those services.
Okay. And do you have a general timeline when you think that might happen?
It is. It is. We are waiting. We are waiting for, like I mentioned, the the last the last pieces of information and direction from the health authorities. And so it is it is it is unknown to me. But I but it is the last piece of of many, many now months of conversation. We've been preparing for this even before we were ready to return to it because we recognize that the value and its importance. I would add that, you know, we have had nearly nineteen thousand family video visits take place between mid-March and last week. And those video visits, as the Commissioner mentioned in her testimony, we don't intend to end those. Those were something that we newly stood up in significant capacity in a matter of days. We see great value and people who have family who are out of state for the first time have been able to visit via video with people in custody, and that that is an invaluable opportunity of connection. And I go for those both locally who might be vulnerable and feel more comfortable visiting in that way or who are not local. So we will continue to support that robustly regardless of the returns in person visits.
Okay, thank you. Just want to attorney visits for a second, and I'm going to just, you know, share some things that we share with public defenders have raised concern about being unable, unappropriably accommodated for video conferences. For example, video conferences scheduled for attorneys to speak to their clients have been canceled the morning of. There's often a seven day waiting period to speak to clients. And attorneys attorneys have been told they have a thirty minute slot, say they go over this time, may lose their privilege, which thirty minutes seems not to me not like enough time to be able to do all the work they need to do. I as I understand it, these issues have been raised as early as April. Can can you tell us what you're doing to address those issues that have been raised to you? Or what has what has been done or what is planned to be done to address those concerns or those comments?
Yes. So this is Chief Jennings. I want to say that we have expanded our Skype capacity where we now have approximately sixty five units to do so. One of the things where it became a problem is that we are available from eight AM to eight PM. However, when we talk about the thirty minute slots, we have the capacity to perform one thousand forty thirty minute slots. We also, or we could do five hundred and twenty sixty minute slots, and this is per day, or two hundred and sixty, a hundred and twenty minute sessions per day. And so one of the things, the eight to twelve AM is the preferred time for everyone that people. So it's very challenging because everybody wants the same time periods. One of the things that happened, we had started doing this transition for technical solutions for about three years now. And so when the Skype came about, we were trying to get everyone to get Skype accounts so that we could handle more things and move further prior to even COVID hitting. So what we've been doing is, as we close housing areas, we're now starting to begin taking off one or two cells to put one unit in the housing areas for court capabilities and also one for visiting capabilities. So we're starting to do that. And then OCA, they no longer control what was previously called the bridge so that people could go. And so we offered this Skype and we urged people to move towards this because we have the capability for the attorneys working out of secured locations of their office to be able to reach their clients. And some of them did not take advantage of it. So we have since worked with our partners in OCA and we got staff trained. And so now we actually manage all of the Skype capabilities for a different agency.
I would also like to add that attorneys are able to come to an in-person visit as well with their clients.
Yeah, but rightfully, I understand why some would be hesitant to do that based on, you know, continuing pandemic. But I think that, are you still hearing, have you been hearing concerns even with expanded capacity? And Chief, I should mention, I think we did talk about this when I was there and you showed me, I think, some of the repurposed space. So I this is familiar to me, but are you still hearing concerns or issues raised around the thirty minutes? And whether there's more time to make more?
That has been abated. And and I think it had a lot to do with the OCA timeframe. So they no longer actually do the bridge at all. It's being controlled entirely by DOC. So we are making people fully aware that if they want additional time, they can, they just have to register for it because the time starts when the person actually gets into the booth. And so we do have my executive director of CJB, who has been working in close collaboration with the courts and administrative judges and the public defenders as well as parole.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to leave it at that because I know other folks have questions as well. Thank you, everybody. I say I said at the beginning, which is that I know this has been extremely difficult months for everybody, whether you are a staff at DOC or CHS, and we do recognize how difficult it was to go in person to work every day. But we do thank all of you for doing that work. And, you know, where we stand today, zero percent is 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 what is great. And it's great progress, particularly at a time where other facilities around this country are not doing nearly as well. And we recognize that it's both the efforts of the staff and the leadership there. But also, I think the releases were tremendously important to making sure that we didn't have these congregant settings and we were able to be compassionate at a time where we really needed to. We will be looking for, you know, those similar efforts if we see a surge in a second wave to talk about releases, talk about ways to utilize housing strategies and ensure there's, you know, enough PPE and things like that. But I appreciate everybody's work there. And for the folks that are not here today that were doing the work on the front lines, we are deeply appreciative of all your work. So thank you, and I'll hand it back over to Chair Rivera.
Thank you so much. I want to get to make to our council member colleagues' questions. I think we have Councilmember Holden.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairs.
Starting time.
Thank you all for your testimony, and thank you, Chairs, for organizing this hearing. We heard from Correction Health, Correctional Health Services and the Department of Corrections about the, you know, the outstanding job that was done in our jails. But let's talk about lessons learned. I guess there were what total detainees in our jails that contracted COVID nineteen was about four hundred? Is that correct? Anybody?
Five hundred seventy six to date.
Five hundred and seventy six. And correction officers that contracted COVID was fourteen?
The total number of department staff is is fourteen thirty. The there have been a hundred and ten non-uniform and the balance thirteen, ten, thirteen hundred.
So how do you explain so much, so many more correction officers contracted the COVID nineteen? They're they're in the same space, right? I mean, and do we have any lessons learned there? Why so many correction officers contracted the COVID nineteen?
So Councilmember Holden, thank you for your question. Our correction officers go home after their tours. And so they're out in the community. And we don't know the origin of their contracting the disease, but they are out in the community after after their shift is over and on their past days. So their exposure is much greater because they have freedom of movement. And I would not want to venture a guess as to why there were so many who contracted the disease.
So let's talk about lessons learned from that, that we know that when they go home, we knew that when the pandemic hit, that you can catch it by various ways. We knew that, I mean, kind of early on, that masks were were involved here, were important. We were told two different things. But it took a while. I mean, I think there was an August, sorry, April eighteenth memo from the chief of department about requiring PPEs for the the staff. Why did it take so long?
So so I, from the first case of COVID, first positive case, which occurred in GRC of a person in custody, we had begun giving out masks at the first case. And so there were tons of teletypes that were put out, thousands of posters that we did. We actually walked, Commissioner Finney and myself and and my bureau chief of facility operations to go out to talk to people, to educate people. We had the management staffs and the facilities talking about it. And so I just want to speak to the fact that, yes, there was a COVID lawsuit that came out to talk about our failure to provide personal protection equipment. However, that was not true. I had given out well over sixty thousand pieces of personal protection equipment. This is about our fourth or fifth pandemic. There were things that we purchased and began purchasing during the first pandemic that we had. This year, the new thing that we began purchasing were the surgical masks. We had previously had a supply of the N ninety five mask. We have never run out of personal protection equipment. I I thank the the fact that we were able to get donations from different organizations, ones that were made sort of like the ones I have on, which we gave out to people in custody and staff. We received donations from.
Yeah, I just, can I just interrupt? I just have, my time is running. I just want to get a few more questions in. I'm sorry. Didn't the correction officers have to sue for free testing? Because that seems to be if a lot of officers are getting, contracting the disease, the, you know, the COVID nineteen, then testing should have been done in a rigorous way early on. And one other question, because what's what's the notification did DOC give to staff who replace posts where a correction officer would test positive?
Time expired.
Were they given any, what kind of notification did DOC give?
So anytime that there is a person that's tested positive, our Health Management Division and collaboration with our Environmental Health Unit makes notifications to the individual there that someone has tested positive. The housing area becomes asymptomatic, and the person could actually go for testing. So we did partner with Northwell Hospital. However, at any of the urgent cares, we all have health coverage. We could go to an urgent care to get tested as well as I did.
I just have one more, Chair. Can I get one more question in quickly?
No problem.
Yep.
This is for Correctional Health Services. You mentioned de-incarceration, and we had the numbers of how many were released. Does any consideration come into play here in releasing detainees into the public? Like, if they have a safe place to stay? In other words, I was really concerned about detainees being released into the shelter system, the congregate shelters with their dormitory style rooms. So they were going from one location, which was a hazard, to a even more hazardous situation if they were going into the shelters. Does that, do you take that into consideration?
Hi, it's Patty Yang. Yes, we, I mentioned this before, that for people who are being discharged DOC from jails, DOC would bring them for screening by CHS. We would screen for COVID-like symptoms and or if we knew somebody with confirmed case, was a confirmed positive case, but who was getting released anyway. We educate them and talk to them about how to self-monitor, how to take care of themselves. We ask specifically if they have a place where they can self-isolate. And if they don't, we worked with the city, with DHS and 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 MACJ to get them a place, a room where they could stay until they're better.
So they wouldn't, so let's say they had no symptoms. Were they released? So they're going from, let's say, Rikers. Would they be released if they had no symptoms into a shelter system, a congregate shelter?
CHS's role here has been about people who have symptoms or are positive. I I'm afraid I can't speak to people who are asymptomatic.
No, but you but you said people who are at risk, let's say. You were releasing people who are at risk, and they didn't. But they were they were compromised. Their health was compromised, or they, so would they release into the shelter system?
The people who CHS was concerned about and advocated for and assisted and connected to to a hotel room, if they had no place to live, were people who had health issues, COVID-related health issues.
They went to hotel rooms, not to the congregate shelter. Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to just thank you, Councilmember Holden. I want to recognize we've been joined by Councilmembers Moya and Councilmembers Eugene. Just to follow up on Councilmember Holden's questions on on testing. Aside from those who are symptomatic and upon entry, who else is tested? I'm just trying to fully understand, can someone in custody request a test? Are there requirements? Do they, is it based on symptoms? Is it readily available like it is to us in the community?
Yes. So as you know, we have also stood up sick call triage lines. So and we have clinics that operate in each facility on a daily basis. So patients can come to request testing. There is a challenge in a correctional setting that testing comes along with isolation. So that's, you know, does require that we, while the tendency of that test, that somebody is separated in some way. So but yes, it can be based on on request. Right now, we know that the, because of the asymptomatic testing on intake that we have, and as we've described, the very stable situation in the housed jail population. So people who have been there stably and are not in a new admission area. We know that the risk, the risk is very low for for those folks. So they may not choose to to be isolated to get a test result, and we wouldn't necessarily recommend it in all cases. But any kind of symptomatology changes that situation, and and we are very aggressive at testing in those cases. Also, you know, I think our, as we think about a potential second wave, you know, our testing strategies need to be responsive to what's actually happening. So if there were a cluster in a certain area, we would very aggressively expand testing in that area in response to what we're seeing on the ground. And the same goes for changing rates of infection in our new admission testing. So we have, it's an important strategy to test all the patients coming into the jail. But it's also an indicator of how much activity there is in the community and particularly specifically in our population. So we're we're watching those things very closely. And what we've learned tells us that our strategies need to be responsive to the local epidemiology, like what's happening in real time in the jails.
So how long would they typically wait to get that test? And then once they get the test, how long do they typically wait for results?
So as Dr. Yang mentioned, the turnaround time has improved dramatically. So at various times throughout the course of this, like others, we've struggled with turnaround times. Right now, that is not an issue. So most of those tests are coming back in in a day or so, and that's what we would tell the patient.
So I just want to confirm, if an asymptomatic incarcerated person asks for a test, it will be given to them, they'll get it in, they'll receive the test, the diagnostic. I haven't asked about antibody. I just want to know about diagnostic right now. They're going to receive that test in a day, maybe the response to their request? And then ultimately, the results will turn around in in how many days? Three, seven? Three, seven?
Generally around one.
They're going to get the test in one day and they'll receive the results in about twenty four hours?
Roughly. We're seeing one to two days most recently.
Okay. And so that was a turnaround time. If you put them in isolation, does that ever mean that they're going into solitary? And what is happening with solitary confinement?
So so I just want to answer that when we quarantine and house and we have them in isolation, that they are quarantined together with other persons in their housing area for fourteen or more days. And so that has really been our success, is that we have not moved people around. We've kept them together. One of the things that we hear when we go out and we speak to people is that the reasons why they don't want to wear the mask, because that is a challenge to get them to wear masks, is that they feel that they've been living with people, the same people, for long periods of time, and no one has gotten sick. And so that has helped us tremendously.
Okay, I I think some some people would disagree with with that description. I understand what you're saying, and I realize the kind of analogy that was offered to me is when I'm home, as I am right now, I'm not wearing a mask, but I I do think that there is a real concern considering what happened, especially with the the spike in the population, you know, as recently as August. And we haven't really spoken, really discussed why your current census, the population right now, has gone up. But I just want to ask two more questions about about testing. And is it is testing and is contact tracing part of discharge planning?
As if it's indicated, it is. And we would we would coordinate with D O H M H and Health and Hospitals to test and trace in the community.
Right. And so I want to just make sure you're working with H and H and the T two program to make sure that contact tracing is, you know, done particularly effectively. I know that Councilmember Holden asked this. You you do test people who are being released from custody. Is that correct?
We don't test on discharge, but we we do know whether they are positive or not, and that's where we would certainly work with with the test and trace program to make sure that they are appropriately self-isolated and and getting self-care and getting support in the community as they need.
Right. I know the total number of people tested daily can fluctuate significantly. It spiked to seven percent of the total population in August in custody. So your how you decide who will be administered a test on any given day is is left much to kind of the the discretion of C H S, which is to determine whether they're symptomatic or they've been exposed. Is that correct?
Well, most of our testing on any given day is universal testing of new admissions.
You'll see on on local law. Sorry.
I was just going to ask, why don't you test on discharge? I just want to know what's the reason for that?
The reason.
Only because of
Sorry.
Bringing up which, you know, jail churn and the idea of people being released into their communities and potentially getting some very, very vulnerable people sick. And I know particularly in my district, sometimes when people are coming home, you know, they're already in apartments where there are multiple generations, where there are senior citizens. And so we have seen such disproportionate impact in some of our low-income housing. And you know, those are the people who are caught up in this very broken system. So I'm just wondering, why is, why aren't we testing that? To make sure that we're keeping all our community.
So there's a couple of things that and then I'll ask Dr. McDonald to to weigh in on this. You know, testing is is a moment in time. It's it will only tell you your status at that point in time when we swap you. The best way and the most effective way is physical distancing, face covering, and good hand hygiene. That's what we drill into everybody at all times. We tell people that when they're leaving. We tell them that when we see them in clinic all the time, reinforcing everybody and everything. That's really the the key. Right now, we have zero active cases. We have zero rate prevalence and incidence in the jails. It's really the city in the community that is more of a of a concern to us currently. Every positive that we had since May nineteenth has been people who are coming in from the the from the community. It's not been from the jail out to the community. That's been the biggest worry. I don't know, Dr. McDonald.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add.
Sorry.
All right, I would just, I know that we talked a little bit about those individuals receiving services who have chronic conditions, underlying health conditions. And I think a lot of that goes back to just P P E and social distancing and, you know, making sure that everyone realizes how important it is for DOC and C H S staff to wear masks when on Rikers Island and in the facilities. And we saw some some troubling information around that. But I want to just ask if if there, you know, we're all worried internally what can happen to the people on Rikers Island, and of course, we are worried about a second wave. You know, if there isn't mask compliance and P P E, if we aren't testing asymptomatic people or people who are being released, it's certainly concerning. So that's just why I wanted to ask those questions repeatedly to 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 figure out how we can prevent the the tragedy we saw in the first few months. So I want to thank you for answering my questions. I want to see if if Councilmember Chair Powers, any follow up?
I'm just gonna add one more question here, and I appreciate a second opportunity here. Just just generally on the releases, which I think is a strategy, wherever you fall in the where where the line should be drawn on them. I think it is a strategy for ensuring that we don't have a second wave that is widespread through these facilities and to keep people safe and also to be, you know, just to be compassionate here. Can I just ask, what was the first, was the first release this year based on COVID as a factor here? And when was the most recent, what we what we're calling here, I think compassionate releases?
I don't know when the first one was. I'd have to go back to that was back in the spring. I mean, we again, we we were doing compassionate release before COVID. And what COVID really did was accelerate the success of our applications because suddenly everybody who actually makes those decisions, the courts, prosecutors, and with defense, understood the the health risk of of remaining in jail. And they were able to more consciously weigh the the risk and benefit. So we have continued to do compassionate release requests. We we were about forty a week or so. We're still doing them and.
And forty 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 a week based on a criteria that would make somebody vulnerable for COVID?
We really, it's it's not so much a COVID issue anymore that we're doing those releases. We are just, it's our regular compassionate release request. I I would have to go back and get back to you on when when we first did something COVID-related and then the last one.
Well, I guess I guess here's here's my question. So here's my real question here. So, you know, you have now, we dropped down, I'd say about thirty, just a tick below, I think thirty nine hundred folks. We are forty two, I think today, maybe the census is forty two or something like that.
Forty five.
Forty five, okay, okay. So so the I was taking numbers of two weeks ago. So so that those numbers have gone back up. Are we continuing while the pandemic remains, while the second wave was large? Are we still looking at folks based on age, their health criteria, other factors here to potentially release people to prevent the transmission of of COVID and particularly with the potential likelihood, or whatever you want to call it, of this surging again? And and because as those numbers go up, there are new folks coming in. I I guess the question is, are we continuing to take the criteria we utilized earlier in the year and make recommendations for release based on being vulnerable to COVID and also trying to keep the population low so that that we are minimizing the amount of folks that can transmit, are exposed to the to the virus?
We continue to support alternatives to incarceration and to make arguments for the people who decide, the courts and 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 the DAs, to release people because of underlying medical conditions that make them more vulnerable to bad outcomes in jail. COVID was an accelerant, but the basic risks and and harms of of being in jail when you're you're frail remain.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm more talking more particularly to COVID based on the fact that we did more releases at COVID. So just go back. Let me just go to the six A program for a second. And I think there's our risk assessment here related to six A. Can you, this is for DOC, can you share with us the elements that go into the risk assessment for the six A program? Or what's how are those decisions made?
Yes, good morning. This is Judy Beal. The risk assessment we're utilizing is called the Public Safety Assessment, the P S A. And that scores individuals in three areas. One area is their risk of reoffending. Another is their risk of committing a violent crime. And the other is failure to appear. So we conduct those assessments on everybody who is city sent and determine if they fall into a lower category, if they are a candidate for the six A program.
Sorry, can you just do this one more time? Failure to appear.
Propensity to commit a new violent crime. And and new criminal conduct, failure to appear, and
Serious.
Huh? Yeah.
Hold on.
You said it.
You said it.
Yeah. Failure to appear, new criminal conduct, and new crime.
Okay, and I obviously be interested in seeing more on that. But the but how does then how does vulnerable condition or health, you know, factor into this when we're talking about, you know, folks who might be at risk based on their age, based on their health status in that particular, not about six A in particular? There's no category there for somebody who might be vulnerable to to die because of the virus and based on any condition here. So how is that? Why is that not factored in?
Well, the the P S A is a nationally recognized tool that was in existence prior to COVID. So it just didn't have that measure in it. But I think that we have to weigh out somebody's health concerns along with their risk to public safety.
It doesn't sound like you're doing that. That's my that's my recommendation, and I'm saying I don't think it sounds like you guys are doing that.
So we are doing that. We have constant communication with C H S. And when these folks are in our jails, they are assessed by C H S in the clinic, not only upon admission, but throughout their stay with us when they're regularly seen in the clinic. If they have a condition that would make them more vulnerable to stay with us, we are aware of that through our conversations with C H S. And so we would take that into account.
Okay, we'll follow up. I know there's a lot of folks waiting for testifying. I'll head it back to the chair and we'll together to get more information on that.
I just wanted to ask, because we're expecting our colleagues from the the Board of Corrections to come up. But on the six A, I know that, you know, New York City is executing its responsibility of this six A program. It's we just feel like it's being done under the perception that COVID has moved you all to do this, but but this movement should not be the exception to implementation and its results. This is actually a program that should always be in motion, and we should call for this momentum to be continued at the very least. But my question is on on just really quick on grievances, because again, I know we're expecting our colleagues from the Board of Corrections to come up just just in a in a minute. And according to a B O C report, medical and mental health complaints were the most frequent kind of grievances O C G S received. The board's findings show that for the COVID nineteen grievances in the medical H and H, thirty percent were about access to medical care, which were filed by people in custody. Twenty three percent were from people concerned about exposure to COVID, and twelve percent were about the lack of preventive measures in the facilities, including the lack of testing. I covered this, some of some of this in my opening remarks. What were the results of grievances that fell to C H S? What did C H S do with these grievances and how were they addressed?
We we were, we look into every single complaint that we get or request. The COVID-related ones were not upheld, were not confirmed. We understood what they were. Complaints that were about access or quality were really about and 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 in general about the medical services was really anxiety and concerns and confusion and questions that we all had, right? How do I get it? How do I keep myself from getting it? What happens if I get it? How will I know what will happen? I'm anxious. I don't I don't want to get it. How do I protect myself? Those are really the questions, the complaints that came to us. We did a number of things. I think in 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 May, I noted in my testimony back then, C H S not only maintained access to healthcare, but we actually stood up additional resources. We opened a specific mental health line from the housing units in areas where where we were housing people who were symptomatic or confirmed cases, expecting that they might have more concerns and more anxiety about their own healthcare and their status and their outcome. We opened up a phone line also in all the asymptomatic exposed housing units, of which there were thousands of beds, where people who remained asymptomatic but were had a known exposure to a subsequently COVID-positive case could talk to us directly, C H S directly, and also report symptoms to us in addition to our monitoring them daily. This is on top of our ongoing access for in-person care, as well as the sick call triage line that C H S stood up before COVID, where where our patients could directly call us and talk to us, ask us questions, express their needs, and without without needing to ask DOC to bring them to clinic.
Matt, I I thank you for your answer. I know, I mean, B O C doesn't have access to grievances that go to C H S. And so we don't know how they've been resolved or how they haven't been resolved. That was the point of my question, and it also ties into access to care and success of the sick call lines that you mentioned. And we don't really know how the voicemails are being handled, which I also covered in my opening remarks. You know, if they truly are about anxiety and stress, I could totally understand that. We're just, you know, always trying to encourage transparency and and with the Board of Corrections, they're there for, you know, accountability purposes. So we can just, you know, get the data, some of the data that we requested. We would really appreciate it. And we thank you very, very much for your time and for staying with us for these couple hours and answering all of them.
Yeah. So Councilwoman Rivera, I just wanted, on sick call triage, this is not part of COVID. Again, sick call triage is something that we stood up in general to increase access for our patients to talk to us. You know, this this rolled out this year and was really helpful during the pandemic. Eighty three percent of those calls during those hours are answered live. Seventeen percent went to to voicemail, but we follow up on every single one of those voicemail messages.
All right, so you have a hundred, a hundred percent. You're answering the call. There is a result.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much again. I just want to thank you for your time and for answering our questions and for all the work that you've done thus far in continuing to work with you to make sure we're improving the lives of the people working on Rikers Island and those who are detained and incarcerated. Encourage you to stay and and listen to some of the testimony from some of the advocates that have been working on this issue for a very, very long time.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now turn to our next panel with representatives from the Board of Correction, including Executive Director Margaret Egan and Board Member Bobby Cohen. Additionally, Emily Turner, Emily Turner, excuse me, will be available for questions. Before we begin, I will administer the oath. Margaret Egan, Bobby Cohen, and Emily Turner, I will call on you each individually for a response. Please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Bobby Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you. Emily Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to now welcome Executive Director Margaret Egan to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Rivera, or almost afternoon, Chair Rivera and Powers and members of the committees on hospitals and criminal justice. Thank you for holding this important hearing today. I hope you and your families are safe and healthy. My name is Margaret Egan. I'm the Executive Director of the New York City Board of Correction. I am joined today by Board Member Robert Cohen and Deputy Executive Director Emily Turner. Board Chair Jennifer Jones Austin is sorry she could not be with us today and sends her regards. Like all others, as we reported to you at the May council hearing, the board has been forced to quickly adapt to this new normal in response to COVID-19. Board staff have done amazing work in new areas as we have redirected our oversight priorities to monitor both the department and CHS's evolving COVID-19 response, including facility compliance with agency plans, as well as DOC and CHS's general operations and compliance with board minimum standards amidst this public health crisis. Our work seeks to independently and publicly document the scope of the public health crisis in the jails and the broader criminal justice system's response to understand successes and challenges, and ultimately ensure, ensure that lessons can be learned quickly. The board published daily reports on COVID-19 in the New York City jails from April 1st to June 5th. And we continue to publish weekly updates. In addition, we've published two reports analyzing observational data our staff have collected via jail surveillance cameras, including observations on social distancing, use of PPE among staff, use of masks among people in custody, phone access and cleaning, and DOC rounding practices in cell units. These reports can be found on our website. The board also continues to hold monthly public meetings which address COVID-19 in the jails, and we expect the pandemic will be a standing item in the months to come. The DOC and CHS collaboration and hard work in dangerous conditions at the height of the pandemic was heroic and that work continues. The effort to identify, separate, monitor, and treat sick people, vulnerable people, and people who may have been exposed is and was effective in providing care and eliminating spread. People in custody who work in the jails were also essential in ensuring the jails were cleaned and continued its basic functions. This work in the jails has happened alongside a sharp decrease in the jail population. At the beginning of the crisis, the board called on all criminal justice system stakeholders to reduce the population of the jail. From our work monitoring the jails over the last 60 years, the board understood that DOC and CHS's best efforts would not be enough to prevent viral transmission in the jails. The jail population decreased 31% from March 16th to April 29th to a low of 3,832 from 5,557 on March 16th. The outbreak and its human impact would have been much worse if not for this decrease in the jail population. The decreased population meant that many fewer vulnerable people were in jail and DOC and CHS were able to commit more resources to the people who remained. Unfortunately, and potentially dangerously, the jail population is currently increasing. On September 11th of 2020, the population was 4,294, an increase of 462 people or 12% since April 29th. The population increase is due to an 18% increase in the people, in, of people detained pre-trial from 3,304 on April 29th to 3,884 people detained pre-trial on September 11th. There are 100 people held on city sentences of one year or less and 175 people held solely on technical parole violations. The jail population on September 11th includes 607 people who are 50 years or older, a population particularly vulnerable to COVID-19. This is an increase of 130 people or 27% since April 29th, when there were 477 older people in jail. We repeat our calls to criminal justice leaders that especially during an ongoing pandemic, we identify and release people with underlying conditions and older people in order to protect their health. Additionally, we call on the city to continue to release people held on short sentences and the state to release people detained solely on technical parole violations. Unfortunately, the jail reductions and the incredible work of the agencies and people in custody could not eliminate the threat. At its peak, there were 259 people in custody housing COVID-confirmed or symptomatic units. There were another 2,715 people in housed in likely exposed but asymptomatic housing. Sadly, three people have died, three people have died in custody from COVID-19. And a number of DOC and CHS staff members have also died. In addition, a total of 1,430 DOC staff and 208 CHS staff have been diagnosed with COVID-19. As of September 15th, CHS reports that there were zero active COVID cases of people in custody. And there were 252 people in custody who had recovered but were no longer contagious. In order to minimize the risk of transmission in the jails and prevent a second outbreak, the city at large must remain vigilant and maintain its mask wearing and social distancing practices. Through both, both in-person observation and monitoring via Genetex surveillance cameras this summer, the board documented DOC staff and people in custody regularly not wearing masks in the jails. While DOC has printed and posted many flyers in the jails, it appears a new creative approach is now necessary. As we've recommended since May, the board calls on DOC and CHS to work with DOHMH on a new public health campaign to communicate health risks and why it is so important, particularly in a jail to wear a mask. This campaign should employ and empower both peer educators and trusted health officials. In addition to producing weekly data reports, board staff continue to conduct targeted onsite inspections in the jails and have been closely monitoring the census in the CDUs at West Facility where confirmed and symptomatic patients are isolated and new admission, new admissions who refuse testing are quarantined. As of September 11th, there were a total of 40, 40 people in the CDU. Board staff have also been closely monitoring placements in and out of the new admission unit currently designated as, designated as asymptomatic but exposed or unquarantined. Board staff identified several placements into and movements of individuals out of asymptomatic exposed units, which did not appear to comply with the policy. The department reports that the facility is taking corrective action and will issue security memoranda that will be read on roll calls on each occasion that a housing user, unit receives a medical isolation designation. Board staff also continue to receive complaints from people in custody, their families and advocates and jail staff. From June 1st to August 31st of 2020, the Board of Correction logged 543 complaints. While not all of the complaints were specifically COVID-related, COVID-19 has, has impacted how DOC and CHS manage the general, the jails generally. The top complaint categories were health, medical. At 63 complaints, correspondence and mail had 31 complaints, classification and housing had 30 complaints, and physical plant had 22 complaints. The 63 health medical complaints were generally people in custody and their families reporting that they needed some type of medical treatment but had not received care. Medication complaints, COVID-related complaints or other issues. Mail complaints were largely about incoming and outgoing mail delays. Classification and housing complaints were related to a person in custody's fear, fear for safety or concerns about a person's restraint status, classification status, or enhanced supervision housing placement. Most physical plant complaints were about high heat conditions in the jail. In addition, board staff continue to monitor grievances received by DOC's Office of Constituent and Grievance Services, OCGS. From June 1 to August 30, OCGS received 7,275 grievances and requests from people in custody, staff, family, attorneys and advocates. The top three grievance categories were staff, medical, H and H, and other requests. Staff complaints are generally complaints about DOC staff from people in custody. Medical H and H complaints are generally about access to care or medication. And the other request category includes requests for information about people in custody and other jurisdiction, legal issues, requests that lack any identifying information, information about volunteering and more. DOC has been closely monitoring COVID-related grievances from June 1 to August 31. OCGS received about 213 COVID-related concerns, which represents 3% of all grievances received by OCGS during that period. The top three categories were concerns about social distancing, concerns about exposure to COVID-19, and concerns about COVID-19 testing. While the jails must continue to structure operations to mitigate the risk of COVID, from COVID-19, the board increasingly receives questions from people in custody, families and advocates about the city's plan for a phased reopening of the jails. This includes questions about how the department will decide when to begin some form of in-person family visiting, school for young adults, congregate religious services, law library, and more. Obviously, the, any resumption of congregate services must be done safely and smartly. The board hopes to learn more about what the department's considerations are here, including the metrics that inform the department's decisions. The state prison system began in-person visiting at the beginning of August with visitors coming from the city and across the state. The federal prison system will begin in-person visiting on October 3rd. The city should learn from these efforts and, and those in other states and work with staff, people in custody and community stakeholders to begin a safe and careful phased reopening of the jails. Finally, I will close by addressing the board's current budget situation. This year, the Board of Correction budget has been subjected to a 16% reduction in funding and a 31% reduction in staffing to a headcount of 27. The board recognizes that the city faces a very deep and real fiscal crisis. However, with these cuts, it will be a challenge to meet our charter mandate, our council legislated requirements, our public expectations, and we will struggle to perform the effective oversight role that will be necessary for the city's jails today on Rikers Island and tomorrow in new borough-based jails to meet the goals that we all share of safer, smaller, safer, fairer and more humane jails. We call on the mayor and the city council to adequately fund the Board of Correction to allow for this critical work to continue. Thank you, and I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now welcome Board Member Bobby Cohen to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioners Rivera, Powers, and all the other city council members who are present. You know, my name is Bobby Cohen, Dr. Robert Cohen, a physician, and I've been a member of the New York City Board the past 11 years as one of your representatives. I'm not speaking as, on the behalf of the board today, although I completely endorse everything that, that, that Maggie just stated. I am speaking based on my 40 years of experience in the failed, field of jail and prison healthcare. I've worked as a physician at Cook County Jail, did research on epidemiology of epilepsy in the Illinois Department of Correction. I was the Associate Medical Director of Rikers Island Health Services in 81 and from 82 to 86 was the Director of the Rikers Island Health Services. I served as the Vice President for Medical and Professional Affairs of the New York City Health and Hospitals Corporation and then became the Director of the Aid Center at St. Vincent's Hospital. And I had been appointed by federal courts by, to oversee the implementation of consent agreements to remedy unconstitutional medical care in Florida, Michigan, Ohio, Connecticut, and New, and in New York State at Greenhaven. I come to speak to you today about actions that should be taken to minimize the morbidity and mortality of coronavirus infection in the city's jails. First, of course, is to discharge as many incarcerated people as possible. The population has been increasing when it should be decreasing. On September 19th, as was noted, two days ago, the population was 4299. Four months ago, on May 25th, it was 3981. The department, MACJ, the police department, CHS, the district attorneys, the judges and the governor must resume the process which saved so many lives last spring. The rate of infection in the jails among staff and incarcerated persons was extremely high. Death rate was low, thank goodness, because the persons most at risk, those with chronic diseases and those older than 50 were released and allowed to protect themselves. That process must be continued and intensified. In preparation for a second wave, the department threw its six A program and CHS and MACJ should be working with relevant agencies to decrease the population by releasing people over 50 years of age and those at increased risk of serious complications if they become infected and those who shouldn't be in jail anyway. Instead, the population in the jails is increasing. The basic policies of distancing, wearing masks and maintaining necessary environmental standards need to be reviewed and reestablished. When I visited Rikers Island last month, social distancing was not being practiced, mask wearing was not being supported, and persons inside housing areas were not being provided masks. Incarcerated persons lined up without distance between them for their lunch and sat together at small tables. If there were no pandemic, this would be fine, but there is a pandemic. The department is fully aware of the practices I've described. They've set them up. And they are aware because they, they work there. I, I asked that the department conduct a full review of its programs, remasking, distancing and environmental protection in light of the current breakdown of these programs. We must all recognize how difficult this is. We have all been living in a strange, frightening and life-threatening world for more than six months. There are few normals anymore and our expectations of each other are and must be extremely high. I speak today not at all to shame the department, which has done an extraordinary job, but to urge it to work harder to meet the standards it has set. When there are no cases of COVID jail, 19 in the jails, these failures will not have consequences. If cases return, they will rapidly spread disease throughout the jails. The city, under the leadership of the Department of Health, must end the mayor's suspension of the Board of Corrections standards regarding visiting barbershop, congregate religious services and law library. We certainly can, can, can address these things through, through variances. These are essential services, essential standards. Under board pressure, DOC has stated that safe congregate religious services will hopefully resume shortly, as will access to barbers. The state has begun to resume visits in its prisons, as have jails in the counties that are joining ours, Nassau and Suffolk County. Under DOH guidance, DOC should develop and publish its plan for resuming these essential services. And the mayor should rescind his executive order. Finally, I would like to offer suggestions to prevent the second wave of infections from establishing itself in the jails. What is needed is a comprehensive program to prevent coronavirus from again establishing itself in the jails and again infecting thousands of persons as happened last spring. I will discuss components of this project. I, I know that the department and CHS are thinking about this every, every day and, 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 and respect the work that they were doing, but I still offer some additional suggestions. Of course, before anything else, reestablishing the program to release as many incarcerated people as possible is critical to the success of this project as it was so successfully in the spring. It should be a functioning program of intake viral screening for all new admissions with testing of appropriate type and frequency, rapid turnaround, and 14 days of quarantine before admission to the general population of the jails. CHS and the department have established an effective approach here, and I, I fully support it. With, with further guidance from the Department of Health, the department needs to review and publish its plans for vehicular transfer of incarcerated persons to and from the jails. Thinking now about how can the virus be kept out and what ways will it come in? When incarcerated persons go to court, is there adequate distancing, ventilation and sanitation on those buses? Are the courts maintaining sufficient distancing, ventilation, mask wearing and sanitation to prevent DOC staff and incarcerated persons from becoming infected and bringing the virus back into the jails? Similarly, when transporting patients outside the jails for specialty care and health and hospitals and health plus hospitals, are appropriate standards being met to maintain safety, safety and not allow patients to become infected and bring the virus back to the jails? Finally, and this is complicated, but I really think it should be part of the, of the, of the planning and discussions going on today. We must recognize that an effective intake screening and quarantine, along with safe transfer from and to the jails for necessary court and clinical appearances, will not engage the primary mechanism through which virus will enter the jails should a second wave occur. This has been discussed by the, you know, by the council and the commissioner today. That mechanism will be through the 10,000 civilian and security staff who enter the facility daily without adequate screening. Screening for temperature and screening by questions is not sufficient, and we know that. We all recognize now, even the CDC, that substantial spread of the pandemic occurs through transmission from asymptomatic and presymptomatic persons. Asking a few questions and checking temperatures are not sufficient. Nursing homes require intake screening, testing, and quarantine of new patients, and screening and testing for coronavirus multiple times each week of the nursing home staff. And I've in my testimony submitted, I've given references for this. The CDC recently published a discussion of mass testing of staff and incarcerated individuals in the MMWR entitled Mass Testing of SARS-CoV-2 in 16 Prisons and Jails. That was on August 21st. Appropriate strict intake screening and quarantine is not sufficient when the pandemic is advancing and prevalence is high. The CDC has recommended that because of the similarities to nursing homes, jails and prisons should consider testing of their staff. And the Department of Health should work with CHS and DOC to develop a plan to enact screening of staff in the event of a second wave. Contact tracing by CHS must include civilian and correctional staff. Of course, of course, enhanced testing of persons symptomatic and asymptomatic within the jails must take place if the second wave breaks into the jails and and CHS mentioned that they that they intend, of course, to to do testing of clusters should they develop. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am proud to be associated with the Board of Correction, which has provided support and leadership locally and nationally in its advocacy and reporting around this pandemic. The council's leadership throughout the this epidemic has been extraordinary, and I am proud to serve as your representative on the board. I do wish to echo Executive Director Egan's remarks that the substantial cut in the BOC budget should be reconsidered and urge you to do that. Thank you very much, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. I'm now going to turn it over to Chair Rivera for questions, followed by Chair Powers. Panelists, please stay unmuted if possible during this question and answer period. Thank you, Chair Rivera. You may begin.
Thank you so much for for your testimony and for staying with us and listening to the two hours of testimony given by DOC and CHS, and I know if if DOC and CHS issue any additional or revised policies or procedures to its COVID-19 action plan, how does BOC intend to monitor the implementation of these policies going forward?
Sure. So so a couple of things. We're in in pretty close contact with DOC and CHS, communicating with them regularly. And and we will continue to to provide the oversight that we that we have had. We'll continue to to issue public reports based on the the data that we receive daily and weekly from from both agencies. We will continue with our targeted onsite inspection. We will continue with our video surveillance work and and monitoring both the complaints that come into the board and and the the grievances that that are filed with DOC. So what our goal is to continue to to approach oversight of of the pandemic in the the comprehensive way that that we have we have done to date.
And some of the things that we we discussed with these agencies, there's just two things I wanted to ask you about. One was about the the sick call, and they use three telehealth lines: sick call, a phone line available for people who are asymptomatic and and a mental health phone line for people who are symptomatic or confirmed. Are there concerns that there are people in custody who are missing needed healthcare because of unreturned phone calls? You might have heard their answer on the voicemail, which is that 100% are either answered live or that those voicemails are returned. In your experience, do you have concerns?
Yeah, we, I mean, I would say that that based on our review of grievances and the complaints that we receive directly, access to care, access to healthcare, mental healthcare continue to be top areas of concern for people in custody and and unfortunately, we don't have an easy way to monitor whether voicemails are returned and whether or not they are returned in a timely manner. And so so we continue to to ask CHS for updates on on data for for calls that are received and voicemails that are returned. Through, I will say that through recent interviews with with individuals during our onsite inspections, we have received generally positive feedback about the CHS sick call line and reports that the process for accessing CHS through the phone lines has improved. What and while the the number of medical grievances has decreased substantially after March and April, it it is starting to take back up. We have seen, we're seeing grievances up by 55% from July to August. So while it seems to be getting better, I think that that we still have have concerns.
And you mentioned, I mean, you mentioned briefly the grievances. I mean, what what more can we do to address the health grievances and complaints of those incarcerated? And I know when it comes to how you can be effective, the budget is certainly a concern. So my follow-up question to that also is how are the budget cuts going to affect your ability to mon- monitor the jails during that potential second wave of COVID-19 infection?
Yeah. So so to your first question, we continue to to analyze the the grievance data through the the grievance system. You know, we have access to the OCGS system and and continue to do that analysis. And so we, as we see issues arise through that data, we we raise them with DOC and CHS. But but also, you know, I think these public forums are also important to make sure that that the concerns of of people in custody, of their families, of advocates, of attorneys are raised and addressed. In terms of of the budget and 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 the very real concern that we have about capacity, we're going to continue doing the the work as as best we can. You know, we will, this is, this will remain a very high priority. And, you know, the reality of a budget crunch is you have to prioritize, but this will, this will remain a high priority, the highest priority, as as long as the pandemic continues.
I know there are some people here with a time constraint, so I want to just ask my colleagues whether, well, I'll go to Chair Powers first, of course. Chair Powers?
I got to be myself. There we go. Well, thank you, guys. Thank you for all your work during the pandemic, and we had an opportunity to visit together during some of the hottest days of our heat conditions. So I want to say thanks to Bennett and staff. And thanks for your kind of ongoing work here. You guys have issued reports and recommendations to DOC about improving compliance with its protocols. Can you just speak to us a little bit about what your recommendations are, how the compliance has been with those recommendations? And then finally, any intention here to promulgate rules or standards to regulate conditions based on what you've seen in the last few months or with the anticipation of a surge ahead when it comes to COVID?
Yeah. So so in terms of of rules, updating rules and and regs, I think that's probably a longer term question. You know, we're going to have to figure out, I think they're probably, we're going to have to figure out ways to evaluate what should be updated and 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 turn to that. But it's probably frankly, a longer term priority in the in the short term. We want to make sure that we are providing the the oversight to the to the ongoing crisis and and raising issues where we see them. In terms of the recommendations that we've made, and and I'll I'll ask Emily Turner to jump in if I if I miss anything. So one of the critical areas of concern from from our both our in-person observation and and through through the Genetech system has been, you know, mask use and and the use of of PPE among staff and people in custody. You know, as I mentioned, DOC has been has printed and posted flyers in jails, but but we feel like something new and creative needs to needs to happen. And again, as I said, we've been recommending for the last several months that that DOC and CHS work with DOHMH on a on a public health campaign. I I think the other area of recommendation is around communication. You know, developing and sharing written protocols for for the management and housing of confirmed pace patients, symptomatic individuals, and those who are in exposed and asymptomatic housing, including both the admission criteria and the removal criteria of those those housing types clarifying to the public, to the board, to DOC staff, what social distancing strategies are being implemented. I think what will help making sure that people understand what is what is happening and 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 as changes are implemented, what those changes are. And I think, you know, I think there are always going to be ways to implement more social distancing practices. It's certainly a challenge in a congregate setting like a jail, but but it's it's so critically important. So I think, you know, those are, I think, the main recommendations. Emily, have I forgotten anything?
Um, I do I do just want to add that the council's Local Law 59 has been really important in pushing the department and CHS to think about their communication strategies and on a weekly basis, they have been issuing flyers to across all housing areas to people in custody, which is part of you know, which is which is related to our recommendation about a public health campaign. And I think that has been an important step in sharing information about changes to jail operations during COVID. So we're encouraged by by that, seeing that happen in the jails. I think another piece of this will be working with other credible messengers to reinforce this message, but also seeing it reinforced with staff who can set an example for people in custody. One more addition on the this the importance of social distancing. So in our weekly reports, we regularly analyze how many dorms are above or below 50% capacity. That's an important metric because with if a dorm is above 50% capacity, alternate bed spacing and other strategies that could help minimize the potential for spread are not able to be implemented. And that that is a concern that we've heard, and we've seen an increase in concern about the number of people who've been housed in in dorm areas. So that's that's where, when we look at the complaints, we see concerns about social distancing. They're related to the housing area capacity. And so we'll continue to publish the statistics on what the housing area capacity looks like in our weekly reports and encourage the department to use some of the additional space it has due to the low population to continue to promote social distancing. As of September 10th, 61% of all open dorms were above 50% capacity, meaning alternate bed spacing wasn't possible there. And recent CDC research suggests that that the prevalence of COVID in in jail settings is has been higher in in dorm-based housing. So so that's something we're keeping an eye on.
Great. Thank you. Just out of respect to time, I'll end it there. Bob, with any other questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now turn it over to questions from council members. As a reminder, if council members have questions, you may use the Zoom raise hand function, and I will call on you in order to start. We'll begin with Council Member Holden.
Thank you.
Starting time.
Thank you, Executive Director Egan and Board Member Bobby Cohen, for all your great work. Bobby, you mentioned that you visited, was it Rikers?
Yeah, so it it was AMKC, I think, the last week of July.
So it's a what did you visit before that during the height of the pandemic? Were you able to get there?
That was the first visit that I had made since the pandemic.
Was that was that visit announced? Did they know you were coming?
No.
They didn't. So pop in, does any other BOC members pop in like that and can give reports on whether there was social distancing, mask-wearing, and so forth?
The staff, the staff pop in. They've done it on multiple occasions, and we have Gen and Tech observations, so we can see.
So what, so the reports that you you generated, were they consistent? Like, everybody observed the same thing on their visits was, or was there there an improvement?
As I recall, and Emily can speak better to this, our first, this, the second report that we issued showed some improvement in mask-wearing relative to the to the first. When my visit, I don't know how to compare that in terms of in terms of of a metric. Masks were being worn when people left their facilities, you know, if they were in a housing area and they left with the correction officer, then everybody was wearing a mask. But but just just walking through the facilities and in the housing areas, there was, there was a probably most people were not wearing masks. And we have, we had documented that. I'm not sure what the publication that perhaps Emily could add to that.
And so when we conduct the targeted jail inspections, we produce a report internally, and then we escalate concerns directly with the department. So as a follow-up to our visit with Dr. Cohen, we shared our concerns that we observed a lack of mask usage with the department after that visit. So that's, we've, since May 9th, we have been conducting targeted onsite inspections and reporting back and escalating concerns as we encounter them.
Oh, it was by detainees not wearing masks, staff. Could you break that down?
Both.
Oh.
It was widespread.
Staff not wearing masks?
Yes.
Now, so this is alarming that if in a confined space, you know, I just, what we talked about as a second wave, we could be in for a problem if this is continuing. Are, is anybody aware, and I wanted to ask, and I forgot to ask this question, but are you observing any technology being used, like the filter the air in in the jails at all or upgrades? Other than just social distancing or masks? I mean, it seems to be that we know we do have technology available, and I've been as a Technology Chair in the City Council. I've met with a number of companies that have proposals on cleaning the air and so forth in confined spaces. Have you made any recommendations in that area? Or observed any anything about cleaning air or measures that were taken?
Well, I certainly haven't, but I but I share your, I share your concern. One of the problems, of course, with Rikers Island is is its age and the quality of the of the HVAC systems going on. I know within the courts right now, and I raised that because that's because because the detainees will be going back and forth into the courts. Some of them have adequate HVAC, some of them do not. There have been there have been some attempts at evaluating what what level of air exchange is going on in those facilities. I'm not aware that the department would have to. I'm not aware, the department would have to, would know if they've done that kind of important work.
Yeah, because just in reviewing a lot of the technology, there's smaller units that are $250 that would do a small room, and there's ionization filters that could be put on HVAC for under a dollar a square foot. So there are, you know, measures we could be investing in, and it's not expensive, just to safeguard the air. Because as you know, with the COVID, we've heard it, that somebody sneezes, it could stay in the air and it could be transferred very quickly. And again, if we go through a second wave, we might be in for it, especially in a confined space like the jails. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll turn it back to Chair Rivera for questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Holden. I just wanted to ask about visitation. I know it was mentioned somewhat in your testimony, and you certainly have recommendations. And I just want to thank you. I know you mentioned testing everyone rapidly with quarantining, the education campaign, stepping up communication, and of course, social distancing strategies, especially in the housing unit, making sure that we're really looking at the 50% threshold. But what is the extent of your involvement in DOC's plans to reinstate in-person family visitations, congregate religious services? I know they mentioned in their testimony, they certainly wanted to start with the barber shop. If there is no direct, I guess, involvement, will you have an opportunity to provide input before the plans are implemented?
Yeah, I think it goes back to, you know, our regular communication with DOC and CHS. We'll continue to do that. I mean, I think visitation is incredibly important. It's an incredibly important tool for connection to family and others. And we want to see it restored as soon as possible, but we also want to make sure that whatever steps are taken to resume visitation is done safely and smartly. We don't want it to become a vector for transmission. And so, we'll continue to talk to DOC and CHS and make sure that we have updated plans and then continue providing oversight on those plans and making sure that whatever policies and procedures they produce, they're adhering to. You know, video visitation has been hugely important, but the sooner that in-person visiting can again be resumed safely and smartly, I think the better off we are. So we'll continue to talk to them and monitor.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much for being a great partner and being so dogged about getting the data. It's been hard for me as a chair of hospitals sometimes in requesting data from H and H. And for all of your work in, especially making sure that our transgender, non-conforming, non-binary detainees and incarcerated individuals are really being counted and receiving the services that they need as well. I just wanted to thank you for that. With that, I have no further questions and just want to thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask if Councilmember Powers or any other additional council members have questions at this time? Okay. Thank you. With that, we've concluded administration testimony, and we will now turn to public testimony. I'd like to remind everyone that we will be calling on individuals one by one to testify. Each panelist will be given three minutes to speak. Councilmembers who have questions for a particular panelist should use the raise hand function in Zoom, and I will call on you after the panelists have completed their testimony. For panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and you may begin delivering your testimony. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. I would now like to welcome Benny Bossio to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Starting time.
Good morning, Chairman Powers, Chairwoman Rivera, and the distinguished members of your committees. My name is Benny Bossio Jr., and I am the President of the Correction Officers Benevolent Association, the second-largest law enforcement union in the city of New York. Our members, as you know, provide care, custody, and control of over 4,000 inmates daily in the nation's second-largest municipal jail system. We are here today to discuss the Department of Corrections and Correctional Health Services Management of COVID-19 in the city's jail system. Before I begin, I want to read the names of eight of my members who lost their lives due to COVID-19 and ask that we pause for a moment of silence after I read their names. Michelle Sumter, Maurice Lacy Jr., Eli Galan, Elveston McCoy, Connie Jones Hawkins, Quincy Simpson, David Williams, and Richard Claus. Thank you. These brave officers lost their lives during the unprecedented public health crisis. Another 1,400 correction offices tested positive for COVID-19. And at the height of the pandemic in March, 3,000 of our members were out sick. According to data collected by the New York Times, the virus has sickened more correction offices in New York, working in the epicenter of the epicenter, than in most other large American cities, including Chicago, Houston, Miami, and Los Angeles combined. The reality is that the city of New York failed to do everything possible to keep my members from dying and from getting sick. From the onset of this crisis, we sounded the alarm about the deadly threats our members were facing. Rather than hearing our cries for help and collaborating with the boots on the ground, the Department of Corrections fought us every step of the way. Let me outline the biggest areas of contention. First, COBA had to fight tooth and nail to convince the DOC to shut down inmate visits. This process took two weeks, and the visits only shut down after the state prisons shut down inmate visits. So, the question I pose to you is why did we have to wait? Second, as the pandemic worsened and other agencies began to adopt protocols for protecting the health and well-being of other essential workers, we met with silence from the senior managers of our agency. Recognizing that the agency was not actively and systematically distributing PPE, correction officers began bringing their own masks to wear. When this happened, they were told that bringing their own mask wasn't permitted, and they should go home. The failure to allow officers to wear masks early on, coupled with the failure to provide PPE dragged down for weeks throughout the month of March and into April. Finally, after realizing help was never on the way, COBA purchased over 40,000 KN95 masks and hundreds of gallons of sanitizer for our members to help keep them safe. In short, we do what DOC and the city of New York failed to do. We also called for correction officers
Crime expired.
COVID-19 testing on Rikers Island. That too fell on deaf ears. Our union then filed a lawsuit in late March demanding that the city of New York be compelled to provide our members with PPE COVID testing and to increase the sanitization of the jails. It was our lawsuit that produced a settlement with the city to not only provide our members with adequate levels of PPE, but to also provide free COVID testing over 50 Northwell Health urgent care locations. The Chief of the Department of Corrections waited until April 18 to finally release a teletype calling for the commanding officers of each facility to ensure that the adequate amount of personal protection equipment is available for all uniformed and non-uniform members of service. So just to be clear, it took numerous officers getting sick and calling out sick and a lawsuit to finally make PPE distribution mandatory some six to eight weeks into the pandemic. That is inexcusable and at best borderline criminal at worst. To make matters worse, the department's response to the staffing shortage was to force dozens of officers to work triple tours of duty, which required us to file yet another lawsuit on April 23rd, arguing that forcing officers to work for 24 hours straight during the public health crisis is a direct invitation to infection and disease because sleep deprivation negatively impacts physical and mental health. Even Mayor de Blasio publicly called this a dumb managerial mistake. Another dumb managerial mistake was when the DOC gave 30,000 KN95 masks to the FDNY from our stockpile after weeks after the mayor said the FDNY already had sufficient supply of PPE in the facilities.
Just want to make, you wrap up, sir. Thank you so much. If you could finish your last thought. You cut out there.
So if we really, so if we are really going to sit here today to examine the impact of COVID-19 in the jails, we first need to face the facts that I've just outlined. The fact is, the record shows a series of gross mismanagement failures, negligence, and leadership voids that led to the unnecessary and preventable deaths of eight of my members and the suffering of my 1,400 members who tested positive. While all of this is going on, my members still went to work and had to grapple with inmates assaulting them and deliberately coughing and spitting in their faces. Correction offices have always been the unsung heroes of law enforcement, and their bravery in the face of adversity throughout the pandemic clearly illustrates that. So let's fast forward to today. Fall literally begins tomorrow, and for months, the health experts of the CDC been sounding the alarm about second wave of COVID-19 returning. I have not, as of today, seen a written action plan from the DOC to ensure that the litany of mistakes made the first time around never happens again. To ensure the DOC is better prepared, I ask for you to join me in holding the city of New York fully accountable for protecting the thousands of lives in our jails' facilities, including my members. To start, the DOC can immediately prepare for the next wave of COVID-19 by taking advantage of the low inmate population, which currently hovers around 4,000 inmates. Instead of consolidating the jails and piling inmates on top of inmates, where we already outnumbered 50 to 1 in most housing areas, the DOC can spread the inmates out throughout the jails, lowering the officer-to-inmate ratio to 15 to 1. This would allow the practice to better social distancing, allowing also increasing the safety of our officers and inmates alike. As part of this redistribution of housing areas, the DOC should break up the gangs in our facilities that are housed according to their gang affiliation. This practice has created little armies within the jails where inmates who weren't part of the gang initially are now forced to join gangs just to be safe. Breaking up the gangs would immediately help us mitigate the potential second wave of COVID-19 and making our facilities safer for everyone. Secondly, we have attempted to compel the city to mandate all correction officers test negative before returning to work if they have tested positive for COVID-19. While the city has refused this request thus far, I ask that you support us in this critical effort to keep our members safe and to keep the inmates safe as well. Finally, I call each of you to meet and speak with me on a regular basis so you can see firsthand how correction officers are navigating the challenges posed to use by COVID-19 and to address any deficiencies in the agency's response. We cannot afford the repeat of the mistakes of the past. We cannot waste a single day as soon as the first COVID-19 case emerges. Thousands of lives are on the line, and the actions you take now will play a vital role in protecting each and every one of us of those lives. With that said, I am happy to answer questions you have. Sorry for going over my time.
That's okay. Thank you very much for being here, for testifying. I just want to ask, because you mentioned a few things right away that needs to be stepped up to ensure that everyone is safe. I wanted to ask specifically, because you mentioned tests. How are, clearly, COVID tests need to occur more frequently. I feel like that's what I pulled from your testimony. You can correct me if I'm wrong. What more can be done to protect those, including testing? Is it happening on a daily basis? Do people have to request them? You can just give me a little bit of insight as to, because testing doesn't seem to be at an adequate rate, how does it work right now for your members?
Well, right now, you fill out a questionnaire, and you walk into the facility, and they have like an infrared camera that tests your temperature. But the reality is, the department has an opportunity to be proactive this time around. Instead of reactive like the last time, they can spread out the inmate population to allow social distancing properly. We currently have the cell space to do so, and we have the amount of staff to be able to accommodate that.
Understood. And right now, you're saying, is PPE sufficient? I realize that at the height of the pandemic, you had to buy thousands of masks and hundreds of gallons of hand sanitizer. Do you feel like you are now in a place where there is adequate PPE?
Well, now officers are allowed to bring in their masks, and I haven't heard an issue in PPEs being an issue now. But that could change, so we need to make sure that they are prepared.
All right, I want to turn it over. I see Councilmember Holden. Actually, I think Councilmember Powers just stepped away for a second, but he will be back. So I will go to Councilmember Holden, who has a question.
Starting time. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. President Bossio, for your testimony. You know, it's not a coincidence. We saw the MTA workers that got hit hard. They're in a confined space. We also see the correction officers hit hard, particularly hard with the COVID, because you're in a confined space. So, I just want to talk about procedure. And you heard Department of Corrections saying, no, they gave you masks. They didn't have to sue. You didn't have to sue. So, obviously, there are two trains of thought here. DOC is saying they gave you masks, and you guys had to sue for masks and testing. If something doesn't jive here, could you elaborate on that a bit? And were officers penalized for bringing their own masks?
Yes. It was officer that brought in their own mask and was questioned that roll call as to why she had a mask on. And she ended up having to be sent home after the fact for bringing in her own mask. They wanted her to take the mask off. She was concerned. She didn't want to take the mask off. She ended up being sent home.
Now, because of the splashing, are your officers given face shields on a regular basis?
No, we don't have face shields on a regular basis. We're getting splashed with urine and feces. We're getting spit on. We had inmates literally say, I'm going to give you COVID and cough in officers' face on purpose at times.
So, you were not provided face shields at all, or at least enough for every officer?
Not enough for every officer, maybe in certain areas, maybe in the CDU, but I'm not 100% sure if that even happened. I know there was many complaints early on from my members about not being able to get masks. They would send an officer to a location to pick up boxes of masks and bring them back. So it was a really, really tough situation in the beginning.
So let's say one of your officers or supervisor tests positive for COVID, and they go out, you know, and let's say they get well. Do they, does DOC or CHS require a negative test to come back to work?
No. No, they do not. They were rushing officers back to work that were still sick. The health division.
That needs to be investigated, because that doesn't sound right. Because I know there's a lot of procedures, and you heard DOC and CHS patting themselves on the back for a great job they did. And I don't think the numbers tell us that. And I remember how slow they were in the beginning, the lawsuits that had to be filed. So, you know, yeah, they're taking credit now because the COVID in New York City is really at a low point. But again, I'm worried about the second wave, if they learned the lesson. I'm not sure they did. And the fact that the face shields are in short supply. My office is given face shields. I'm getting hundreds of face shields to my office on a regular basis. Yet, it's a little alarming that the correction officers are not given that enough. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. That's news to me, Councilmember. I haven't received any face shields, but I'm going to call you about that. So, I just want to thank you for your testimony. I realize, you know, based on the insufficient PPE and everything that your organization, in terms of the losses, I am so sorry, and thank you for reading their names. And I realize this is about the safety of all people on the island. So, thank you for your testimony. I have no further questions if there's anyone else. Okay, seeing none. I thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll now turn to our next panel. I'd like to first call on Anna Berger-Carlson to testify. After Ms. Carlson, we'll hear from Kayla Simpson, followed by Oreene Williams, followed by Stan Germain. Anna Berger-Carlson, you may begin when you are ready.
Starting time.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Anna Carlson. I'm a lawyer with the Legal Aid Society and the Criminal Defense Practice. And I'm testifying today on behalf of the Association of Legal Aid Attorneys and UAW 2325. the Association of Legal Aid Attorneys and UAW twenty-three twenty-five. I want to tell you today what I've experienced as a criminal defense attorney representing incarcerated individuals during this pandemic and what I've seen of their experience in the areas of the courthouse that are controlled by Department of Corrections. My incarcerated clients are now produced in person to the courthouses when they're scheduled to testify before a grand jury because the grand juries are now convening in person. And the grand jury is an incredibly crucial stage in their case. The decision whether to testify is unique and personal to each client. It really needs to be a conversation that's held, uh, in confidence and it's fully informed and therefore it's a long conversation. And I want to point out, there's been conversation in this hearing earlier on about scheduling video conferences. It would be my desire to have sensitive conversations about the grand jury via video conference while my client is incarcerated. The grand jury proceeding takes place roughly five business days after the initial arraignment, so it's time sensitive. And I want to point out that I've had failures all summer to set up timely, uh, video conferences. In fact, just this morning, I arraigned a gentleman yesterday in court who has a grand jury proceeding scheduled for Friday. Just this morning, I tried to set up a video conference and I was told the soonest available time slot will be September twenty-ninth, four days after his grand jury proceeding. So I have no choice but to meet with him in person. I want to tell you what it's like to go into the area, um, that we call the pens where my clients are produced, uh, where I speak to them and the, the dangers that I perceive in the physical layout of the pens. Um, in Brooklyn Supreme Court where I practice, the pens are a small, low-ceilinged, windowless room on the third floor. They always smell awful, which really raises the question of ventilation. You could cut the smell with a knife. It smells like sweat, toilets, spoiled milk from the milk cartons that the inmates are given to drink. Corrections officers regularly, uh, have candles or incense burning, but even during COVID, that smells ever-present. Whatever enters the air in the pens is still hanging there. The room is split into two halves by a wall of reinforced plexiglass and along that central wall of plexiglass are small interview built booths that have been built out to have a confidential conversation. My client goes into one half of a booth on their side of the wall, shuts the door behind them, and I enter the booth from the other side. The, the booth is soundproofed and therefore sealed and unventilated. There's no way for me and my client to socially distance from each other while we're having this intensive, detailed, long conversation. The only way for me to hear what my client has to say and my client to hear my advice is to speak through a hole that's cut in the plexiglass between us. It's about the size of the saucer that I'm holding up. It's about four and a half or five inches across. Um, and my clients are desperate for me to hear what they have to say. They're spitting through the hole. Sometimes they're holding their mouth directly up to it. Um, I'm, I see him at my time, but if I could just finish this thought. With your permission, um, I just, I just want to let you know that, for example, on August twenty-sixth, I met with a client to prepare him for grand jury testimony, and he was produced without a mask. And the court officer who brought him into the pens also was not wearing a mask. Uh, he, I asked him whether he'd been given a mask and he said, oh yes, they gave me one when I came into the facility, when I was brought to MDC, and he produced from his pocket a completely flattened, filthy, tattered surgical mask, um, that he said he'd been wearing for the last five days. So there's a real problem with a lack of PPE. There's a real problem with the lack of, uh, court officers wearing PPA, uh, PPE and complying with those protocols. So as somebody who's, who's coming from the public into the courthouse and meeting with my client in a way where I cannot possibly socially distance from them, um, I want to ask DOC and DCAS to have written safety plans that are public. I want, I want the same kind of written safety plan and transparent protocol that the Department of Education has to safeguard the public's health because the communities that I represent are communities that are already ravaged by COVID, that have had the worst. They're completely marginalized and they, they need for this space where they have the least control over what happens to them. They need this safe to be, this space to be safe. So I want to thank, um, you Chair Rivera, Chair Powers, and everyone who's working to keep these vulnerable communities safe. Uh, the courts in their current state are a super-spreader event within the jails that's waiting to happen.
Thank you for your testimony. I'll now turn it to Kayla Simpson for testimony. You may begin when you are ready.
Starting time.
Hey, uh, good afternoon. My name is Kayla Simpson. I'm a staff attorney with the Legal Aid Society's Prisoners Rights Project. Uh, thank you, Chairs, for this opportunity to speak. Um, and I, I want to focus on masks for a second. I know we've been talking about that a lot, but I want to focus on them and I'll tell you why. Um, because they're important, but also because I think it tells you something about the agency that's at the heart of this hearing and what the council should do, uh, in response to that knowledge of the agency. Um, so they're important. Masks are important. Just last week, CDC Director Dr. Redfield told the US Senate that masks are the most important, powerful public health tool we have against the pandemic. And they matter even more in our jails. Uh, staff come from all over the city and beyond the In-N-Out facilities every day, working different housing areas, different buildings. And so DOC rightfully has a policy that staff must wear masks, but they are not wearing masks. And DOC leadership cannot adequately explain why their workforce, city employees, can flout the mask mandate with such visibility and imputiny. And our attorneys, you've heard it today, uh, from the Board of Correction, but our attorneys said the same thing. Uh, Anna just, uh, reiterated, they visit clients in person or via video conference, and they see that DOC staff, DOC staff wearing masks properly is an exception, not a rule. One attorney even described watching two uniformed officers posting mask-required signs while they themselves were not wearing masks. And when we raised this issue with DOC leadership, their response was just to say, listen, it's a policy. We've posted posters, we make masks available, and we'll continue to reiterate expectations. Bureaucratic. What Commissioner Brand did not say is that she is willing to enforce the rule. And this failure of leadership over a municipal workforce endangers everyone in the jails and in the communities. We should be outraged by it. When public schools reopen, we will require kindergarteners to wear masks or be sent home. Yet this administration can't seem to ask the same of its correction officers. Why should we expect more of children than we expect of city employees? And I raise this because the issue is representative of the fundamental problem in this agency, which is that policy just isn't reality. It's true with masks. It's true with other COVID-19 responses. Paperwork doesn't translate to practice. And you can see it, I think, in the social distancing question, uh, that, that Beni Basio raised. Um, the most VOC, recent VOC reporting shows us that the housing area density is rising. Sixty-one percent of particularly dangerous dorm units are above fifty percent capacity, which is a much higher number, of course, than we will accept when we return to indoor dining this month, where we might only, uh, sit in a place for two hours, but the max capacity allowed by city officials is twenty-five percent. And I think that begs the question of how we can value the lives of people in custody so little that we protect our indoor dining experience more than we protect them. And I see I'm at time again, but, uh, I've, I have one more thought if I.
Time expired.
So I think when we're looking at actual practices in the jails and not just the promises, I think we see that the department is creating conditions recklessly in the jails that are ripe for a resurgence, second wave, which Council Member Holden was right, uh, to raise. Um, and I think the council can and should legislate some of those practices, like the, the rubber meets the road practices to cap capacity of housing units during infectious disease emergencies, like the one we're in, to mandate random mass testing of staff and people in custody in line with CDC guidance, and to adopt other modern outbreak prevention methods like wastewater testing, like some prisons and universities are using to, to identify outbreaks early. The jails just aren't safe. Um, and they grow less safe every day as the population continues to rise. We have to decarcerate and we can't take our eyes off these conditions. It's not the time to relax. People in custody are part of our community and they require our vigilance. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Orain Williams. You may begin when you are ready.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Powers, Chairperson Rivera and Committee Member. My name is Orain Williams and I'm a criminal defense social worker at the Bronx Defender. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today. As social worker, we pay close attention to issues regarding the health and the wellness of our clients being held pre-trial in the city jails. We emphasize the need for meaningful access to mental health services and necessary changes in environmental factors that are putting our clients' life at risk. Environmental factors such as extreme heat, unclean water from pipe and isolation throughout this pandemic have created an inhumane environment. In addition to the extreme risk caused by COVID-19 in a crowded jail setting, there is a disregard for human lives in those facilities. These conditions not only affect our clients' physical health, but also their emotional and mental health. Throughout COVID-19 pandemic, we have seen our clients struggle to access necessary mental health support. In many cases, clients who express ongoing suicidal ideation receive no attention despite regular advocacy on their behalf. Many of our clients' story reflects the danger of neglectful correctional healthcare. Our, our asthmatic client who became sick during the initial outbreak in jails were at times denied access to inhaler. In August, while checking in with one of our clients, he explained it was extremely hot in his cell. As a result of this heat, he experienced difficulty sleeping at night, nosebleeds and dizziness with intense headache. This month, while checking in with another client, he explained that he had some rashes appearing on his skin and the doctor informed him that it could be a result of the water. Our client confirmed that the water from the pipe is often blackish with a yellow, blackish or yellow with a bad odor. Additionally, we want to highlight the lack of transparency regarding DOC and CHS policy and procedures which create barriers to decarceration. Defense attorneys and advocate attempting to visit their client in person at the jail facilities report many officers without masks entirely are wearing them below their chin while interacting with the public and people in custody. Additionally, limitation in access to counsel are ongoing and must be addressed. DOC struggled to produce our clients by video for court appearance, which result in case being adjourned and creating unnecessary delay in the due process. As remote work continue, it is critical that the, the city takes the necessary measure to ensure our clients are present for their court appearances. Also, our clients are being denied access to counsel and the opportunity to participate in disciplinary processes. We ask the city council to support our advocacy, our advocacy effort with the board to include access to counsel in disciplinary proceeding as a part of their restrictive housing rule to be released.
I'm expired.
In closing, we urge the city, we, in closing, we urge the council to think creatively about other ways to reduce barriers to decarceration, while finding ways to release many people as possible. And for those who remain incarcerated, it is critical that the condition be improved where, wherever possible. This pandemic is not over. It has ceased to ravage our state for right now, but there's a second wave predicted for the fall. City council must at now learn from their mistakes made these past six months and take real tangible steps to protect New Yorkers in custody before more lives are being taken. Thank you.
Okay, I think, can I just have a quick, uh, follow-up question? Um, thank you for your testimony and I, I agree with you and I, I think we, uh, uh, you know, agree with the recommendation around having legal counsel disciplinary hearings and it's something that we've talked to the mayor's office about and DOC and something that I'd like to see included any ru- rulemaking when it comes to, uh, when, any changes when it comes to restricted housing? Um, do, just, can you share any more information about what you'd like to see where, when, when it comes to, uh, representation? I think that, um, dark, you know, with particularly with COVID, there's been, I think, some, you know, challenges to get, uh, you know, the full, the public in there, but is there any other recommendations you have around that? It's something I am supportive. We've articulated, I think, in writing at the VOC and others, but I'd like to hear if there's any specific recommendations around that that you have. This is the, the last, uh, individual who just testified.
For me, um, the recommendation that we would have from our office is just for tra- more transparency and real transparency from DOC and CHS. We believe that if the court is fully aware of how bad the conditions are in, in those facilities, they will be more willing to, um, to release our, our clients, those who are in need of being released, especially those who are at high risk with health condition. But with the courts, with the court not being aware of the true condition of what's going on in those facility, it makes us, it makes argument at bail application and other advocacy, uh, moments in the court difficult for, um, for our clients who are, who are in.
Okay, and you were, but you also, in my, in my correcting, you are recommending that you should be able to have legal counsel if there's like a, a hearing on punitive segregation or restricted housing?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd say I, I share your opinion on that and I'd like to see that happen. It's something we're pushing for. Obviously, we'd like to see the entire, the sort of end of it, and that's something that.
So I think, I think what in, I'm sorry, in response to that specifically, we would rather to, we would like to be notified about the hearings happening, especially an advanced notification of when those hearings are going to be happening and also be allowed to be there because that's not, in the moment, we're not allowed, we're not hearing about the here, about those procedures in advance, which, you know, doesn't give us the opportunity to advocate to be there.
Yeah, okay, great. Appreciate it. Thank you for the testimony.
Thank you.
You just have one more.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, we will now hear from Stan Germain. You may begin when you are ready.
Starting time.
Uh, good morning, committee members, and thank you to Chairpersons Powers and Rivera for giving me this opportunity to testify. My name is Stan Herman. I am the Executive Director of New York County Defender Services, one of New York City's public defender offices that represents clients exclusively in Manhattan. As a preliminary matter, please note that I've introduced substantive written testimony, including, including a report produced by my office based on a survey of incarcerated clients in Rikers Island. What I want to focus my oral remarks on is the untenable situation at DOC facilities, which is the persistent and inexplicable lack of mask-wearing by corrections officers. In sum, based on direct observation by my staff, at least half of New York City correction officers are either not wearing masks or wearing them around their shame with their nose and mouth exposed and thus rendering them useless. It is unfathomable that after what the city has gone through during this pandemic, that we have persons refusing to wear masks in jail of all places. While the infection rate is low throughout the state and city, the virus is very much still here. Last week, we had five thousand five hundred and thirty-seven new cases and sixty deaths in New York State, including thirty-eight deaths in New York City and two thousand three hundred and ninety-nine new COVID cases in our city. How is it that supermarket employees, MTA employees and everyday New Yorkers can wear masks when outside their homes, but DOC employees openly flout this requirement? Especially when eight members of their union lost their lives with another fourteen hundred union members testing positive. It's simply inexplicable. Union President Basio just spent a lot of time talking about the inability to get masks. However, now that his members have masks, up to fifty percent of them are not wearing them. I ask him why. My lawyers and our clients personally make these observations of maskless CEOs every day. My lawyers and staff need to be able to visit incarcerated clients to provide the level of advocacy that incarcerated persons deserve. However, I will not ask my staff to place their health at risk because correction officers are choosing to ignore what the CDC Director, Surgeon General, Dr. Fauci, Governor Cuomo, and all elected officials are asking all Americans to do to help combat COVID-19, which is wear a mask. We ask that the city council demand a written policy from DOC leadership regarding mask-wearing in jails and that there be real consequences for non-compliance. I will leave you with this thought. When schools reopen, if you as elected officials hear that teachers are not wearing masks, that Board of Education employees are walking around schools without wearing masks.
I'm expired.
What would the level of outrage be among elected officials, among parents, among cities, among citizens? Incarcerated people deserve the same level of outrage. Our public defenders deserve the same level of outrage that the maskless corrections officers are presenting a, a clear and present danger to our staff and to our clients. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'll now turn it to Chair Rivera for questions.
Thank you so much for, um, for waiting for testifying, for all the work that you do, the service that you provide to the city. And I'm, I'm so sorry that you are faced with this reality of even when there is PPE provided, it's practically useless. And then you also feel, well, I'm going to just summarize that you're also putting yourselves at risk, having these meetings, going back to your organizations where you work tirelessly with your colleagues, um, as public defenders. So do your, are those in custody facing access to care? In addition to maybe the lack of. In addition to maybe the lack of PPE, and then my other question for anyone on the panel is, do your clients mention that they get a test at least, or that they're asked that they want to be tested, that there's some sort of protocol that they go through to keep themselves and the people around them, such as yourselves, safe?
Chairman Rivera, I'm, I'm going to read to you an exchange that one of my lawyers had just last Wednesday with an incarcerated client, and this is verbatim, and this is coming from an incarcerated client. Quote, "We are packed in, in a dorm. Every single bed is full. There is no social distancing. It's like they are running out of room to put people. When I first got here, they had every other bed was empty and the middle, but now there is no pretense of social distancing. They are keeping the place full. It's only when you have to go up front, when you are around the warden, when you all of a sudden get a mask." Question, when was the last time you got a mask? Answer, last mask was last Tuesday when I worked up front, when I was near the brass, like the warden and the lieutenant. That's the reality of what's happening at the Rikers Island jail from somebody who was there. There apparently has been a clear shift from an emphasis on social distancing and mask wearing to this kind of laissez-faire attitude that, well, the infection rate is at 1%, and there's no big deal. And as I pointed out in my remarks, the virus is still very much here, and this is very concerning.
I, I get, oh, did somebody want to add? Because this, my second question is about the attorney-client privilege when you're having virtual meetings. But, but if anyone had anything to add to my first question, please, please feel free.
So Chair Rivera, I just mentioned that the, the client that I spoke about previously, who I met with on, on August 26th, he told me that he was tested when he entered Department of Corrections custody right after his first arrest, but he was not retested after meeting with me. And we were meeting in a non-socially distanced manner through a hole. When he was brought back again to MDC, he was not retested after being in the pens, after interacting with court officers who were not masked. And so that seems to me like a, like a gigantic and obvious place where COVID could re-enter the jail is after these court appearances due to conditions that are in the courthouses. I'd also point out as far as attorney-client privilege, um, conversations that, uh, you know, my clients will often try to call me because there is such a long wait for video conferences. And specifically, the line for the phones is another place where they mention that they're having problems with social distancing, that there's always a long line for the phones, that people are not staying away from each other in that line because they don't want to miss their turn, and that they're unmasked during that, um, during that waiting period.
Thank you. I, I, um, the virtual meetings was something I, I did try to ask about. I realize that CHS and our legal system technically might use different systems, but that breach of, of trust and confidentiality has certainly been a cause of concern. I, I wanted to know, see if any of my colleagues had any questions for this panel.
Just had a, um, just a quick statement. I appreciate, um, the comment and the suggestion around after the visits and the contact with other folks. I think it's something that, I, look, first of all, I mean, I think we all agree that the face masking has, the face mask wearing has to happen. And particularly, if we start seeing a surge, not only do we have to have PPE available for folks, which was an issue early on, but they have to be willing and able to use it. But I, I also, on, on those other areas where, you know, we may not be seeing testing happening, or there may be contact with, um, uh, folks from the outside, I think it is a good area to focus on as for further compliance and get a strategy around testing. So something I think both Councilmember Rivera and I can follow up with and figure out how to make, uh, the department uh, sort of better adhere to, I think, our outside standards for what standards in other places for our testing, and, uh, we'll be happy to follow up on that, but I appreciate you raising those. And we'd be happy to hear any more that folks have either through email or testimony.
And about some of your clients, you know, in terms of receiving meaningful and adequate access to medical care, that's something that I'm, I'm very, very concerned about. I, I do see Councilmember Holden, your hand is up. You want to ask a question of the panel?
Yeah, um, I just want to echo the both chairs' concern. There should be a set of procedures, and that's why I'm, I've asked, uh, BOC and, uh, certainly we, we need it from DOC to find out what's the procedure when you're leaving, going to court, when you're coming in contact with people from the outside on a regular basis. We need, I mean, it's easy to take credit now and say, oh, we don't have, we were under 1%, we're doing a better job than any, uh, Department of Corrections in the country and keeping down the COVID. Yeah, because New York City is doing that. So taking credit when we're down to less than 1% is disingenuous, I would say, but it's alarming to hear from the advocates of saying that there's nothing set up, nobody's getting retested, they're coming in contact with the outside. Um, we need to hold, um, everyone, the administration accountable if, uh, because again, when the second wave comes, it doesn't sound like we're going to be ready. So I think we have to really make it an issue, um, certainly, and I thank the chairs for doing that.
Can I just ask the council members, um, I know CHS represented today that people in custody who request testing are able to get one, even if they're not symptomatic. But I would really encourage, uh, following up on how many of those tests have actually been performed and what the results of them have been, because we regularly hear from people in custody that they want tests, um, but are not able to get them. So I, I would just be interested in some of the data behind that, and I think that sort of underscores some of the things that Dr. Cohen has recommended, um, that certainly we've been asking for, which is, uh, a much broader testing strategy. Um, maybe, maybe even random mass testing offered to people in custody uh, as sort of an outbreak prevention mechanism, because Councilmember Holden, you're quite right. Like, we're, we're at a low prevalence in the community, which is why we're in a low prevalence in the jails. Um, and I think that we, that's the kind of vigilance we need to be talking about. Um, and I feel like often the agencies are, are far too reactive, uh, rather than, you know, uh, doing some of these other, other strategies that other places are using, uh, like random mass testing, like mandating staff regular testing, like, uh, even wastewater testing, which I know I, I mentioned briefly, but I would just encourage follow-up on that. We'd really appreciate it.
Absolutely. I mean, Local Law 59 requires them to report the number of individuals tested for infection, but we mentioned that some of those results are pending, and then we also got kind of a range of the daily tests. And then it was a bit unclear as to how long it takes between your request getting tested and then the results. So we certainly have a large, um, request in for data, detailed data at that. Um, so I, I thank you. I, I agree. It's, um, it's certainly urgent, and we really do appreciate all of the comments from this panel and what you've done.
Thank you, committee members.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Uh, seeing no other council member questions, we will move on to our next panel. Um, I'd now like to welcome Tanya Krupat to testify. After Tanya, we will hear from Andre Ward, followed by Zachary Katz Nelson, followed by Sarita Daftery. Uh, Ms. Tanya Krupat, you may begin when you are ready.
Hi, can you hear me? Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Tanya Krupat. I'm the Director of the Osborne Center for Justice Across Generations, the policy arm of the Osborne Association. Osborne offers a wide range of diversion and reentry programs in the Bronx, Brooklyn, Harlem, Newburgh, and Buffalo, as well as services at 30 state prisons and seven New York City jails. Over the past six months, our program staff who work on Rikers or in borough jails have pivoted to providing program materials to DOC for distribution, staffing a reentry hotline to assist those preparing to leave or having just left, conducting extensive outreach to people upon discharge from DOC facilities, and providing reentry services both in person and virtually. Today, I will be focusing on visiting, the lack thereof, and televisiting. I am a member of the DOC Visiting Work Group, although I'm not testifying on behalf of the work group today. The benefits of visiting are numerous and well documented, including benefits for corrections such as reduced violence and institutional adjustment, as well as benefits for the incarcerated individuals, their children, and families. Sadly, visiting is often an aspect of corrections that gets overlooked at best or deemed inconvenient, a security threat, or unimportant, unimportant at worst. Visiting at the city's jails has been suspended since March 18th. No plan has been announced indicating when visiting might reopen or what it might look like when it does. There has been silence regarding the issue of visiting, although DOC processed 500 to 700 visitors per day five days a week until COVID halted all visits. Visiting has resumed in state prisons with social distancing and PPE in place. A revised visit schedule and details made available to the public on the DOC's website. Visiting can be managed during this time, and we ask that DOC work with CHS, representatives of those who visit, visit room officers, the DOC Visit Work Group, and the BOC to develop a thoughtful, informed plan for reinstating visits. I wanted to speak about televisiting. While we commend the department for expediting and expansion of televisiting, we wanted to speak about a few, uh, details in this. Between April 1st and June 21st, the department conducted 9,400 in televisits. While impressive, when analyzed across the 10 facilities and the 11 weeks that this encompasses, and the fact that no other visits are happening, the numbers actually paint a different picture. To put this, you know, in perspective, applying the census numbers from this past Friday, if only half of all people incarcerated on Rikers received one televisit per week over 11 weeks, this would amount to 23,584 televisits. My testimony includes a chart of the estimated percentage of the population at each facility who might be having weekly televisits. While OBCC is an impressive 65%, all other facilities are under 29% with Rose M. Singer Center at 23 and RNDC at 20%. So close to 80% of women and young people and most others on Rikers are not having televisiting or visits.
I'm expired.
Can I just say one thing in closing? Um, we ask that you also look into the practice of strip searching individuals before and after each televisit. We've been told that DOC will conduct strip searches upon reasonable suspicion, and we ask that the council and the board look into this further and require weekly reporting of any strip search that's conducted. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We will now be hearing from Andre Ward. You may begin when you are ready.
Starting time.
Yes, to, um, Chairpersons Rivera and Powers, um, good afternoon. My name is Andre Ward. I'm the Associate Vice President of the David Rothenberg Center for Public Policy at the Fortune Society. The Fortune Society is a 53-year-old organization that supports successful reentry from incarceration and promotes alternatives to incarceration, thus strengthening the fabric of our communities. We do this by believing in the power of people to change, building lives through service programs shaped by the experiences of our participants, and changing minds through education and advocacy to promote the creation of a fair, humane, and truly rehabilitative correctional system. In a March 30th article featured in the Daily Eagle, it was reported that at least 167 people that were currently detained in New York City jails, um, now have COVID-19, an increase of more than 60% since Friday, according to a daily report from the Department of Corrections. Another 114 jail staff members have also tested positive for the illness, according to DOCs. More recently, in an August 2010, August 10th, 2020 article featured in the Daily News, it was reported that a total of 754 incarcerated people in all New York State prisons have tested positive for coronavirus. Of those cases, 608 have recovered. 17 incarcerated people have died of the disease. The Fortune Society is really grateful, obviously, for the hard work of advocates and lawmakers who amplify the need to release thousands of people that were detained on Rikers to stem the spread of the coronavirus. And we thank both the Board of Corrections for identifying over 2,000 detainees for release, and Governor Cuomo for taking some action to release some of those who were detained. Yet that is not enough, nor did it address the much-needed safety protocols that need to be put in place to prevent the spread of the coronavirus in jails and prisons. There is also no evidence of measures being taken to humanely and effectively engage people in jails and prisons if some future pandemic occurred. What's needed is, is more when it comes to scientific, medically effective, and humanely centered approaches to addressing the pandemic in jails and prisons. This especially applies to those who've been put in positions of public trust, such as correction officers whose roles should be to demonstrate the care all humans need to grow and transform while they remain temporarily in custody and other institutions responsible supervision. What is needed is an actual monitoring of how people in jails and prisons are treated by corrections officers during any pandemic or national crisis. This monitoring could come in the form of corrections officers being mandated to wear body cameras to ensure that detained and incarcerated people are treated with humanity and that the safety mechanisms that the department says have been put in place are in fact being used on a daily basis. What is needed is mandated first aid training for those detained and incarcerated, as well as correctional officers. Not only can this training be used to save lives in jails and prisons, it can also be used by a detained or incarcerated person as a transferable skill. As a formerly incarcerated man of color, um, I experienced medical neglect while in prison. I witnessed countless others experience the same thing. I can only imagine what the women and men that are detained and incarcerated are going through today, which means immediate action must occur. Leaders like yourselves, uh, Chairperson Rivera and Powers remain committed to making a difference in the way the criminal justice system operates. And with this pandemic or any other, we are looking to get others in the Assembly and Senate to join alongside you to ensure that those who are detained and incarcerated, especially during a pandemic, are treated humanely. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will be hearing from Zachary Katz Nelson. You may begin when you are ready.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Zachary Katz Nelson. I'm the Policy Director at the Litman Commission. Our formal name is the Independent Commission on New York City Criminal Justice and Carceral Reform. Thank you for the chance to testify today, and thank you for holding this hearing. You know, on many levels, COVID has brought home the lesson that we must continue to move away from incarceration as much as possible. As CHS testified earlier, the best way to prevent the spread of COVID in the jails is to have as many people safe as possible, is to have as few people locked up as possible. And of course, it's important to recognize the steps that the administration and other actors in the system took to release significant numbers of people earlier in the pandemic. Though clearly more could have been done, and it could have been done more quickly. I'd like to focus today on people serving city sentences. Commissioner Brand testified. She stated that 296 people had been released via the 6A program. If you compare those stats with the stats that the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice released for March and April, it seems that no one or almost no one has been released under that program since the earliest days of the pandemic. And it, we would strongly encourage the commissioner to change that and for the council to put pressure on the administration to change that, because not only did the 6A releases undoubtedly save lives by limiting exposure to COVID, it brought down the recidivism rate by providing people who are being released with housing and wraparound services as needed. And many of the people in the 6A program had several previous convictions. As one service provider said, described it to me, it's people who are effectively serving a life sentence, one misdemeanor at a time, and they're being cycled in and out of jail, subjected to trauma and violence, not getting the services they need, uh, and just repeating the cycle. But the 6A program is proving significantly more effective, you know, rearrest rates of people in the program are just a little above half of what people are, for people released generally. So these services matter, and it costs vastly less than it does at Rikers. It's right, housing and wraparound services costs between, say, $50,000 to $75,000 a year per person, depending on people's needs. At Rikers today, we spend approximately $500,000 per person per year. So the 100 people who are serving city sentences right now, that's $50 million a year just for those 100 people. That's not a good use of our resources. And one of the things is that before COVID hit, the administration had promised they would permanently move people with serious mental and physical health needs out of the jails and into city hospital settings. And even though that too, we obviously reduced the population and take the most medically vulnerable people out of the jails, that process has stalled. And so we'd encourage the city council to really push the administration to start moving that forward as quickly as possible. So ultimately, hopefully, we can all take the lessons that COVID has taught us and permanently revamp our reliance on incarceration. Because not only will that help save lives, it'll help the lives of the people who are incarcerated who are serving sentences or facing charges, and frankly, to help people in the communities. There'll be fewer victims and lower recidivism when people come out. So that's the real path forward, we believe. Thank you.
Time expired.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll be hearing from Sarita Daftery. You may begin when you are ready.
Hello, good afternoon. Um, thank you, uh, Councilmember Rivera, Councilmember Powers for holding this hearing. Um, I'm testifying today as a member of the Jails Action Coalition and the Justice for Women Task Force. Um, I want to thank you for, uh, your work in partnership with, uh, the formerly incarcerated leaders and allies across New York City to advocate for reducing the use of incarceration in New York City overall, and in response to COVID-19. The urgency of decarcerating, closing records, and addressing unsafe conditions in all city jails is more clear The urgency of decarcerating, closing records, and addressing unsafe conditions in all city jails is more clear than ever. I want to echo all of what the advocates and public defenders have raised in previous testimony and add a few details. The last few months have magnified both the completely unacceptable physical environment in the jails and also the disregard and disorganization with which the Department of Corrections and its staff operate. Again, we continue to hear a great discrepancy between what DOC says and what is actually being done, what people who are in the jails are reporting to us. Recently, loved ones of people currently in DOC custody reported the following. One mother described to me that her son and others in his housing unit at RNDC have not had access to a barber since March. She said he looks neglected and sad in her weekly video calls with him. She said COs are not consistently wearing masks. A woman described that her partner, who was being held at the boat, has watched DOC put up signs saying that they will be giving masks and gloves, but they haven't. He said COs are not wearing masks and gloves themselves. A mother, reporting back from her son, who was also held on the boat, said that DOC only gives small hotel-sized soap bars and only when they have them. He said they also give masks only when they have them and when people in custody ask. Often, they must reuse masks repeatedly, and he also noted that COs are not wearing masks regularly at all. People in custody are expected to clean their own housing areas, but they're not provided with disinfectant regularly. He described a particularly dehumanizing incident last week when a person in his cell block, who was not mentally well, overflowed his toilet. The people in custody were forced to clean feces and urine the best they could without proper cleaning supplies. While the behavior of DOC indicates that they feel no urgency to enforce the COVID-19 regulations among their staff, particularly wearing masks, they continued with provisions that are convenient for them, prohibiting visiting and programming. The reason is pretty transparent. DOC has always viewed visiting and programming as a nuisance and is using this opportunity to deny those rights to people in custody. There's a clear discrepancy between what DOC says they're doing and what people in custody report, but that is not new. Actually, Councilmember Powers, you mentioned that it's the city's duty and responsibility to keep people in custody safe. And what I would say to close is that people in DOC's custody were not safe before COVID, and they aren't safe now. It's been well documented by the Federal Independent Monitor and others that this is a department that consistently violates minimum standards for people, for responsible treatment of people in their custody, and consistently fails to hold its staff accountable for following the rules established to protect human rights. Yet the mayor has subjected the Board of-
I'm expired.
Just finish this sentence if you don't mind. The mayor has subjected the Board of Corrections to budget cuts that will reduce their staff, who provide critical oversight by thirty-one percent, without planning any similar cuts to the Department of Corrections, which employs two officers for every person in custody, but still cannot manage to distribute masks. The council simply cannot allow that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now ask if any council members have questions.
I just want to thank you all. Clearly, them bringing up the low infection rate, as was mentioned, is reflective of what we're all trying to do. But I think we've been pretty clear about the release program and releasing as many individuals as possible. It worked. It happened very, very quickly at the beginning, and there's no reason why that momentum should not continue. So I thank you all for your service and for your testimony. And we are absolutely committed to following up on the PPE, on the testing, on protecting the staff and the people that are there and making sure that there are social distancing protocols in place and that there is contact tracing. So I just want to thank you all for your testimony and really just unacceptable conditions and experiences that the people that you know and your loved ones are having.
Thank you, Chair. We'll now be moving on to our next panel. I'd like to welcome Dr. Victoria A. Phillips to testify. After Dr. Phillips, we'll be hearing from Jordan Rosenthal, followed by Kelsey DeVilla, followed by Mrs. Sammy Workisher, followed by Kelly Grace Prince. Dr. Phillips, you may begin when you are ready.
Starting time.
Good morning, Chair Rivera and Powers and all others. Oh, afternoon, sorry. My name is Minister Dr. Victoria Phillips. You all know me as Ms. Vee, and I'm a member of the Jails Action Coalition, the community health and justice organizer at the Mental Health Project Urban Justice Center, and founder of Visionary V V. For the past two decades, I've worked in nursing, mental health, and criminal justice in a range of environments with almost every demographic within our society. I speak from a place of demanding justice and never to demean DOC or CHS, but to assist them in becoming better and most productive while overlooking our New York City community members. There has always been so much to say within three minutes, and I'm always fighting internally on who gets the truth, whose truth gets highlighted in such a short time. I urge this council to figure out a way that those on the inside can call into these hearings so that you can hear from them yourselves. And I want to inform you that most reports coming to me right now from the inside are around the lack of access to PPE, timely medical visits or mental health treatment, access to law library, and receiving back all of their requests and virtual visits. Now, with a little bit of time left, please allow me to answer one of your questions directly on the record from someone on the inside. Okay, and so you're saying that in your personal experience with mental health, I want to make it clear for the record. So you're saying in your personal experience with mental health, you feel that once a month is not good enough? And when you've asked for, requested additional time, mental health downstairs have told you it's DOC that has to put it in?
That's correct. That's correct. And it is insufficient, you know? It's sufficient when, you know, comes to us, all the services that we need for mental health.
That's something that I also have brought up to the Board of Corrections. So the fact that you're even mentioning right now, can you just take a moment to fully explain to the board why it's so important in this situation to have access to mental health more than once a month, more than once every twenty-eight days?
Sure. I believe it's very, um, the fact that it affects us in a negative way because being the fact that we don't have more, we don't have any office visitors coming. We can't get visitors, um, due to the coronavirus.
Time expired.
Thank you for being so honest and open. I have so much more that I could play to answer all your questions. I have hours of tape directly answering your questions about PPE, going to court, the visits, how it is, how they don't have privacy, why they're talking to the attorneys, how people are being emailed after a visit is supposed to have start, to be notified that they're supposed to be on a visit. I have so many recordings, but please, please, city council, make it where people can call in, and you can hear from them before you even start questioning DOC or anyone else that sits before you, so that they can properly have to answer what you're hearing directly from the inside. Please, I beg you, make that happen. Make it happen now.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll be hearing from Jordan Rosenthal. You may begin when you are ready.
Starting time.
Hi, my name is Jordan Rosenthal, and I'm the Director of Community Engagement for the Women's Community Justice Association and a member of the Justice for Women Task Force. And I want to thank my fellow sisters and other advocates who are testifying on behalf of the Justice for Women Task Force. The Women's Community Justice Association is a gender-specific, trauma-informed advocacy-for-justice agency that uplifts and amplifies the voices of all women who are experts through their life experiences and efforts. I want to begin by thanking Chair Powers and Chair Rivera for holding this crucial oversight hearing. On Sunday, March twenty-second, Governor Cuomo announced the New York State on pause executive order, and our lives were drastically changed. The city and state scrambled to implement policies and protocols that assured uniform safety for everyone. Unsurprisingly, people detained in New York City jails were not a priority during this effort. They've remained an afterthought, and as a result, our city jails have been ravaged by the novel coronavirus. When the Board of Corrections started to release its daily report in April, it was clear the virus was spreading like wildfire, and more than half of the women detained were exposed but asymptomatic. By mid-May, seventy-five percent of women detained at Rosie's were likely exposed but asymptomatic. The Rose M. Singer Center is not a particularly sanitary or clean place to begin with. The lack of personal protective equipment and access to hygiene stations have exacerbated the problem. Even now, when the virus is somewhat contained, I'm weary of the efforts of DOC. For instance, if police officers are supposed to be wearing, or I'm sorry, if police officers are supposed to be giving fifty-dollar tickets to those on public transit without wearing masks but are not wearing masks themselves, how is the Department of Corrections operating behind closed doors? As we've heard from everyone else, they're not wearing masks. They're not abiding by their own rules. Which brings me to the next topic, transparency. The Board of Corrections updates has been an important tool for our organization, and we're grateful for the board's commitment to transparency. However, the board was stopped reporting the number of pregnant women in custody on May twentieth. When I reached out, they explained they stopped reporting because they were receiving inconsistent information from DOC, and they were concerned about reporting inaccurate data. It is baffling that the city cannot record accurate information regarding who is in their custody, and even more specific for a subpopulation that requires special care. If an entity does not know who is in their custody, how can they accurately care for them? So, which brings me to recommendations. Before a second wave of COVID hits, the city should focus on decarcerating as many women and men as possible. Over seventy-five percent of the women detained at Rosie's are pretrial, meaning they are legally innocent. The Women's Community Justice Association has been advocating for a single standalone site, and there were points of agreement in the U-LAR process, saying that the city would help find a standalone site. The one in Queens is too far away, and it's going to take too long to build. We could close the Rose M. Singer Center now and get the women off of the island. I'm sorry, can I finish my sentence or?
I'm expired.
We could actually get the women off the island and use the Rose M. Singer Center space, which is larger, to accommodate social distancing by renovating a place like Lincoln Correctional Facility, Bayview, or even Edge Cove. It would just require work within the city and state. Please, help us, you know, make this a reality, and we're also submitting written testimony within the seventy-two hours for further details of our plan. Thank you so much, and my apologies for going over time.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will be hearing from Kelsey DeVilla. You may begin when you are ready.
Starting time.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kelsey Diavila. I'm with Brooklyn Defender Services. Thank you, Ms. Vee, for sharing that recording, and I agree. I hope this council can find ways for people incarcerated to testify directly themselves in all public hearings, including Board of Correction hearings. I do want to spend this time to just respond to what CHS and DOC said about testing and contact tracing. When someone is arrested, likely by police officers not wearing masks, and bail is set, they are transported from a DOC bus, they're handcuffed to an individual. Eventually, they are moved from intake to new admission housing, and they're not just with the people they entered the jail with, but with those who entered days before they did. Now, we have two people, let's say Person A and Person B, who are both in the same new admission housing unit. Person A was tested before Person B arrived in the unit, and they will stay in the unit until Person A gets their test results back. Person A and Person B are now in the same unit. They're sharing the same dayroom space, telephone, showers, with little to no sanitation being witnessed. Now, Person A, his test results come back negative and has moved to another unit, potentially another facility. Person B gets their test results back days later, and they're positive. CHS says the new admission unit is put on quarantine status, and any retesting is done on a case-by-case basis, depending on if I quote, if the person was using PPE. But is Person A notified, and is the new unit that Person A is in, are they being tested or are they notified? Today, CHS said testing is available for everyone, but many people have reported that they will ask for tests, and their tests or their requests are ignored or told, "We'll look into it." People are entering housing units before or without ever receiving their test results. It's creating unnecessary stress and anxiety, as I was pointing out earlier. It's building up tensions in the jails, and people have been saying this since March. Housing units are above fifty percent capacity, and DOC is moving people every day. My team worked with someone who was moved to four different facilities in one week. When we asked CHS if they test every time someone enters a facility, we were told, and I quote, "It's not practical because transfers within custody happen frequently." Transfers are happening at the guidance of DOC, not from the guidance of CHS or public health officials. And when asked for clarification on their contact tracing efforts, we are told, "It's complicated. It's complex." We're heading into a second wave with little information on how CHS and DOC are handling this crisis. DOC said today that they are awaiting DOHMH guidance on family and social visit reopening, yet legal visits are happening with what seems like no guidance at all. With DOC apathy towards compliance and an increasing jail population, Rikers Island will once again be at the epicenter of this crisis, and we will have the headlines to show it. And lastly, I will say, the city has not publicly reported the number of people who contracted COVID-19 in the jails but died post-release. And advocates and attorneys worked endlessly for their release, and for many, it was too late. And I think to understand the true impact of COVID-19 in the jails and the spread of COVID-19 in the city, we must know this number. So, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll be hearing from Mrs. Sammy Workisher. You may begin when you are ready.
Starting time.
Hello. The following is my testimony before you, the New York City Council, on September twenty-first, two thousand twenty. My name is Sammy Workheiser. I am forty-one years old and an advocate for pregnant women who are incarcerated in New York State. I speak today for the pregnant women on the inside who have had to grow a human being inside of their bodies while also serving jail time or a prison sentence. I proudly advocate for women who are justice-impacted with our team at A Little Piece of Light and Donahill in Brooklyn, New York. I am a member of the Justice for Women Task Force, a speaker for the National Action Network for Halt Solitary, and the National Religious Campaign Against Torture. I advocate in Binghamton, New York, for incarcerated men and women with the Citizen Action of New York's Southern Tier Chapter. I am calling for the immediate end to solitary confinement being used for medical quarantine during the COVID-19 pandemic. The practice of solitary confinement itself is humane and unfair and constitutes as cruel and unusual punishment, a violation of our constitutional rights. Three women that I am friends with from Bedford Hills Correctional Facility were diagnosed with COVID-19. Darlene Benson-Sey, also known as Lulu, was diagnosed with COVID-19. Lulu and I both entered prison in two thousand thirteen. It was the other women on one thirteen C and D housing unit that got the officer's attention to ensure that Lulu got to the hospital. Lulu passed away while serving her sentence. She was a woman of color and an elder. She was a friend, mother, sister, daughter, aunt, grandmother, and she was my friend. She applied for clemency last year but was denied even after her operation. When I was in solitary confinement while serving a twelve-years-to-life prison sentence, my water broke while I was only five months pregnant with twins. My son Julius Kingston survived, and his twin sister Jacinta Rain was born alive but lived only twenty-two minutes on my chest. The effects of solitary confinement are real. Thousands of men and women incarcerated in New York have been placed in solitary as a means for medical quarantine. Other reasons for solitary can be protective custody, temporary custody, or for disciplinary reasons. There is no good reason to throw a woman or a man, and certainly not a pregnant mother, in the hole. If you are unsure if solitary confinement should be eradicated or not, I propose an experiment for you to do at home. You will need a stranger. Have the stranger lock you in your bathroom. Have them lock it from the outside and open it when they feel like it about three times a week. Consider then what it is truly like to live like us, human beings like you. Think then of the thousands of men and women, specifically pregnant women, in protective custody,
I'm expired.
just like I was. Think of unborn babies squirming in utero, dealing with their mother's daily stressors from jail life, and just surviving on the inside. Darlene Benson-Sey and Jacinta Rain Workheiser, who were not as lucky, would want me to plead with you to end solitary confinement for all people of New York City and across the state of New York. It is especially despicable, excuse me, it is especially despicable and harmful to human life as a means for medical quarantine during the COVID-19 pandemic. This concludes my testimony today, and a copy of the aforementioned will be submitted to the New York State Senate. Thank you for your compassion and consideration for radical change and human- Thank you for your compassion and consideration for radical change and human decency. Respectfully submitted, Mrs. Sammy Workheiser. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We will now hear from Kelly Grace Prince. You may begin when you are ready.
Starting time.
Good afternoon. I'm going to keep my video off because of my bad internet connection. I'm Kelly Grace Price, the founder of Close Rosies. I wanted to talk today about sexual abuse in the jails during the time of COVID. I'll get to that in a second. I wanted Councilwoman Powers just to ask, there was a hearing last May about COVID in the jails and you and Councilwoman Lansman were asking the department specifically if there was a special area for people to be housed after they are tested at intake and before the results come back. We never heard if the DOC in fact did have an interim staging area like this or was going to set one up. They promised to get back to you. I've heard nary any conversations about this since that, since that time, since that discussion. And it would be great if we could get follow-up about that specific issue. Specifically about sexual abuse in the jails. A report was just published by the department, the semi-annual report, the PRIA report in August. And rates of sexual violence in the jail have skyrocketed despite the fact that the population has ebbed considerably. The population of the Rosam Singer Center at one point was down almost eighty percent. But yet, the total number of staff on inmate allegations of sexual victimization has gone up one hundred and eighty-five percent. Incidences of sexual abuse have gone up one hundred and eleven percent and sexual harassment up eight hundred and fifty percent. I want to bring this to your attention. Of course, I will submit my very comprehensive data analysis in writing. But still, no one's talking about this issue of sexual violence in the jails. The, the reporting bill Councilwoman Powers that you promised me when you were elected that was signed in early 2019, it is still not, the information still isn't being released properly. And especially at a time when we shouldn't be touching each other, these rates of staff on persons that are behind bars of incidents of sexual abuse and harassment against them skyrocketing raises some alarming red flags. Like I said, I'll submit my written testimony. As far as Rosam Singer Center, allegedly rates of sexual violence have gone down, but you know, that, that's kind of splicing hairs. At the, at the same time, the population has gone down eighty percent. So just because we have two less incidences of sexual violence in the jail reported in this half of year semi-annual assessment report doesn't necessarily mean that we're making any progress at Rosie's if the population has gone down eighty percent. I'll, I'll email you directly the reports and my data analysis so you can look at them yourselves and I'd like to, to get a commitment from you, from you, Councilwoman Powers, to work hand in hand to improve this issue because it really has been shoved to the side. Thank you so much for letting me testify today.
Great. Yeah, we'll follow up with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now welcome Eda Ness to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Starting time.
Okay, I think there might be some issues. I'd like to now welcome Donna Hilton to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Starting time.
Thank you. I'm sorry I missed most of what was testified to, but I just want to jump back in and, and because of what I heard earlier, so it's kind of changed the direction of my testimony. As a formerly incarcerated individual who spent twenty-seven years in the system, thirteen months of that on Rikers Island, I can just, I just want to really emphasize and reemphasize to you the, the, the lies that I've heard today. There's absolutely no way for people who are on the island to have any kind of social distancing, any kind of real, real medical attention. And right now, let me emphasize that the, the absolute lack of mental health care. The absolute lack of mental health care. We enter a time of a pandemic that no one is certain of anything. And so the, the rate of mental health and within our system is at an exorbitant level and no one is addressing this. No one is addressing. I'm pretty sure that my sister and colleague, Dr. Victoria Phillips, has said this already and will continue to say, but I need to highlight this. And I am really, really, really saddened that we continue to have panels, hearings like this, where we have to continue talking about the same thing. I joined this fight many years ago and we are in 2020, almost at the end of 2020, we're in a pandemic. And the people that have been released have been sent back to prison, have been sent back to be detained on Rikers Island during a pandemic. We have the most vulnerable people who are on the island right now that their issues are not being addressed and we expect the system to address it, where we know the system is inadequate at best, inadequate in some part medical attention and mental health attention. And so I just have to jump in and say that from what I heard earlier. And I'm one that oftentimes that I, I'm, I'm transparent and I speak my truth and I have to call lies when I hear them. Especially knowing the system the way that I know the system. There is absolutely no way that all those things that we heard this morning are truthful. I'm sorry, we continue to hear our people sending us messages, SOS messages, because they are afraid. We are not hearing the truth about how many are tested, how many are tested positive, what they're doing to address this. We are not hearing the truth and I'm telling you this from as far person from the inside as well as an activist and an advocate now on the outside. I can attest to this and I will stand on it. Please do not believe what you are hearing and what you have heard this morning and what we have heard many times back. We should be at a point where we shut down this island and address the needs, the root causes of the issues that continue to send people to that island, detention and for whatever other causes and issues. We must look at our communities and invest in them and to stop this. It is wrong, it is unjust, it is not equitable, it is not fair, and it is inhumane and cruel. I am sick and tired of having to fight for people and having to go through these hearings and like we're dogs chasing our tails. Nothing is getting done. We are in a pandemic, people, a pandemic, regardless of guilt or innocence, color of a person's skin, their religion, whatever their mental health status is. They should be afforded the opportunity for care, period. It is time that we vote and I'm telling you, we have a voting initiative running across this nation and I'm telling you now as Donna Hilton, activist, advocate, formerly incarcerated woman, mother, black woman, the time to vote a lot of you out happens now. This is too much. We are dealing with human beings and, and human beings' lives. It is just too much. And I say this with all respect, I say this with all, I mean, with love, I say this with care, but I need you to understand the times that we are in. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We will now be turning to Eda Ness. You may begin when you are ready.
Starting time.
Hello, can you hear me? Hi, my name is Eda Ness. I'm a defense lawyer. You know, I just wanted to say, reiterate what, what Ms. Hilton just said so passionately. But also my experience, you know, what's happening right now in the jails is intertwined with what's the lack of safety in the courts. Because what hasn't been addressed is, is how the courts are treating our clients in terms of how they're bringing them to the courthouse, like are the buses sanitized, handcuffs sanitized? It may sound minor, but all those kinds of issues are not minor issues because once a client is brought to the courthouse, they're exposed to the lack of safety inside the courthouse. And then when they're taken back to Rikers Island, they're exposed to the lack of safety there. So their exposure rates, especially if there's a second wave coming, goes back and forth and is being transmitted. So it's directly, it's very important to look at the fact that the courts have not been transparent at all. That includes OCA, that includes DCAST. I realize this hearing is about COVID in the jails in terms of the Department of Corrections, but everything is intertwined. And so we do have to demand, I would hope that the city council demands transparency in terms of accessing the written reports from OCA, from DCAST, and also from the Department of Corrections. Because that's very important to see what's actually happening there. I don't believe our clients are being given the respect that they should be. This is a pandemic time. It's actually quite horrendous that clients are treated with such disregard and lack of care in terms of where they're coming from, in terms of that they're poor people, primarily incarcerated at Rikers Island. It's a lack of respect that's afforded to them by the OCA system and by DCAST inside the court building. Everything is intertwined there and that total lack of respect that has occurred for so many years now and all this push for restorative justice, everything's intertwined. And I would hope that the city council keeps on pressing forward in terms of looking at the conditions that our clients suffer from and the impacts on their families and on them. So I thank the council for the opportunity to speak on this. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now ask if any council members have questions for these panelists.
I did have a question about, you know, some of the, clearly we're here in mutual frustration because in order to solve a, a problem, which is very entrenched systemically in terms of the racism, you know, we're just asking for basic things like data, which we can't even get. And I will tell you, as an elected official who has been pretty much asked to foil data rather than being presented with it so that I can practice my charter of mandated responsibility of oversight and investigation. It's incredibly troubling. So I just wanted to ask, I guess, is, if, if there was at least one person, I know Kelly mentioned about some of the data in terms of sexual assault, and I know there was a previous panel that also mentioned strip searching and getting data on that, where do you get most of your data as you're compiling some of this analysis? Analysis. I'm not sure if she's still. Kelly, are you still there? Well, either way, I mean, I wanted to just mention to any of the people on the panel that I realize, and I would say to Donna as well, what you said about just not getting any answers and going around in circles. You know, that's why we bring them here, to get them on the record, to have them, let us know what they have and what they don't have. And I see about the Manhattan DA or Bronx DA and CHS and holding them accountable as well. I realize the legal system is entwined and Councilmember Powers has been a leader on that. Councilmember Powers, I don't know if you had any questions for this panel?
No, I appreciate it. I, I am, I think both myself and Councilmember Rivera are deeply concerned about our preparedness for a second wave and also that the agencies take this very seriously when we talk about any reemergence or surge of the virus. And, you know, not only did we in May pass the legislation to require them to actually report all this information that they weren't reporting, we did give them more tools. I have a bill that we passed that would allow to create a local release commission to actually release folks or be mandated with being able to review and, and release folks. And now we're in a, in a pandemic and we are holding, you know, we are here to hold them accountable for that and also to figure out the steps that we need to take to be ready for whatever a second wave is, which is going to be undoubtedly including getting folks out of these facilities where there will be a potential for widespread transmission. So I do appreciate everybody being here and, and being part of this. And I know Councilmember Rivera and I are going to have to convene our folks after this to talk about ways to ensure that these agencies are meeting their mandates and meeting their requirements. But we appreciate you guys being part of this and any, any information or reporting that you're not, you're not receiving from the agencies. We're here to make sure you, you're getting that information. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. At this time, this concludes our public panel testimony. If you have inadvertently missed anyone that has registered to testify today and has yet to be called, please use the Zoom raise hand function now and you will be called on order, in, in the order that you have raised your hand. Seeing no hands, I'm going to turn it over to the chairs for closing remarks. Chair Rivera.
Thank you so much to everyone who, who stood with us. Clearly, we're sharing your concerns and, you know, having witnessed the conditions there, certainly the courtroom, the access to medical care. We're very, 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 very troubled and concerned and are certainly outraged and thank you all for all of your work. I know that the community spread created horrific conditions before lockdown and asymptomatic people added to that rampant spread because we just didn't know how many people had it. So I'm very, very concerned that even with the dedicated medical staff that is a part of correctional health services, by the time that we realize we need more masks and we behave strictly, and that's all parties involved, it will be too late. The asymptomatic spread is real and unfortunately, if we do see a spike, if we do see the second wave, I think we're all very afraid that it's likely it could already be in the jails because of the lax protocols. So that was one of the reasons for having this hearing today. And again, I just want to thank you all for testifying and for staying with us all these hours later. Chair Powers, do you want to add anything in closing?
Well, first of all, thank you to Chair Rivera, always, always for, you know, ensuring that our CHS and DOC are doing their jobs when it comes to ensure, you know, providing their, you know, upholding their responsibility here to keep folks safe during a, during a pandemic. But I will say, I do anticipate, I think we all do, that the next few months will be, you know, filled with the sort of concern and fear of a new surge in COVID, not to mention the regular flu and other health issues that will come up during winter. And I, beyond this hearing, I think there's the work that Councilmember Rivera, I will do to make sure that the DOC and CHS are doing their jobs, including both of us have been there, I think, recently, to being inside and making sure that they're doing their jobs and seeing it ourselves. I, I will say, just to end on this note, just a little bit, you know, unrelated to this, because this has come up in one of the person's testimony. We are now at September 21st and the mayor has promised all of us that he would appoint and empower his task force to come back to us with rulemaking related to housing, particularly when we talk about solitary confinement and punitive segregation. I know Councilmember Rivera and I both testified to Board of Corrections last year, calling for an end to it. And we are, we are waiting for those results back and anticipating the mayor to uphold his promise here to end solitary confinement in our city jails. So we are calling on him again, I think, to do that and do it before we hit a second wave of pandemic and to send us the results of that so that we can begin doing our oversight function on that and be ready to take action. So I want to just remind that because we had the last week or so, I know some of the folks on here had been calling for that and I want to echo their calls for that once more. But again, thank you for everybody for being here through this and to the chair for her work here to make sure that we're providing critical oversight to these agencies that have custody over New Yorkers. And I think it would make sense for us to do some follow-up after this with those agencies on the questions that remain or the areas where there needs to be continued attention. So thank you and thank you everybody for being here.
You're here. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you. And with that, I will adjourn this hearing, Committee on Hospitals and Committee on Criminal Justice. Thank you so much, everyone.